Welcome to City of Grand Rapids Planning Commission Meeting for October 9, 2025. We are going to have a few public hearings today. Before we do that, we're going to have a presentation on the Grand Rapids Housing Needs Assessment, but I will just go through kind of the process for how we go through our public hearings. Initially, staff will come up and give us a presentation and their staff report. Then we'll have the applicant come up and add any additional details that you'd like us to know. At that point, I will open the public comment. If you're here to comment, you can come up to the microphone and address the Planning Commission for up to three minutes. And then I'll close public comment and we will discuss and make a decision. Want to remind everyone that this meeting is being streamed live on Facebook and YouTube and that for our resolution, staff has put together draft language for us to use however we would like with findings both for and against. And so if you see us reading, we are, but it is not prescribed what the decision is going to be beforehand. And with that, I'll wait on conflict of interest till we get to the public hearing. So I'll call Mr. Kilpatrick up to brief us.
Thank you for the time. I appreciate it. Great to see so many friendly faces. I know almost all of you. My name is Ryan Kilpatrick. I'm the lead consultant for Housing Next and the owner of Flywheel Consultants. Housing Next every two to three years updates the annual housing needs assessment for all of Kent County. Each time, we have had a specific element dedicated to the city of Grand Rapids so that we're not just talking about countywide housing needs. We're also talking about the needs specific to the city of Grand Rapids. So today, I'm going to fly through some data. I know you have a hefty agenda. I'm grateful to have this time with you. I already talked about that. So what's important to understand is we contract with Bowen National Research. They're a national consulting firm based out of Columbus, Ohio. They do these kinds of studies all over the place. They're one of the preferred contractors for the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. And what they do is they look at data from a number of sources. They're looking at not just population growth, they're also looking at job growth. In essence, we've seen a five to one growth in jobs compared to housing units over the last decade. So we're creating a lot more jobs than we are housing. They also look at movership patterns and commuting patterns. So they're looking at who's driving in from other places. And of those folks who are commuting in, how many are likely to want to move here if there's a housing option available and affordable to them? The other thing they're looking at is household formation. And so this is a really important one. One of the things that we often hear when we're out in the community is, but wait a second, the population really hasn't grown for several years. How in the world can we need more housing? Now, I want you to be thinking about your own households and whether you have kids who are on their way to growing up or are already grown. Think about, there was a moment in time when there were three or four, maybe five or six of you all living in one house. And then some of those kids, hopefully, grew up or will grow up and move out. But we want them to stay in town. And so they're not adding to the population, but they are adding to the housing demand, right? Population stays the same. They didn't suddenly appear when they were 19 years old, but they did suddenly want to have their own housing option in the community. So that's one way we get household growth. Another way is family separations, right? Sometimes we have parents that decide, oh, this isn't working anymore. We're going to split up. Mom lives in one spot, dad lives in another spot. They now need two homes and they only needed one before. Those kinds of things drive our housing needs as much as population growth. But you'll also see, we're seeing a lot of job growth. So when we look at housing needs, we look at both the rental needs and the for sale needs. And we break those out by income category, right? And the income categories make a lot of sense for how families earn money in the city of Grand Rapids. They don't align perfectly with the way subsidies show up, right? So if you're familiar with the low-income housing tax credit program, that usually subsidizes housing that is affordable to households earning at or below 60% area median income. That band isn't clearly represented here because we are looking at 50% AMI and below. And then this band from 51% to 81% AMI. It gets confusing. There's like federal standards that are baked in, then there's local stuff. So if at any point anybody has any questions, reach out to us at Housing Next, jen@housingnext.org or Ryan K@housingnext.org. Happy to answer questions. So what you can see here is the demand for, actually, the need for additional rental housing has grown in the bottom two tiers, meaning we need collective roughly 21% more housing units in our low-income and moderate-income household band. And we still need more housing in our middle-income and upper-income bands, just less than we did three years ago, right? The market has been pretty good at solving for that higher-income housing and our kind of like upper-middle-income housing. So households earning 80% of the median income or above, and that number is generally about $60,000 a year or more. We're able to produce that kind of housing fairly well in the market, but you'll see where we're on track and off track. We're still not producing enough of that product type relative to the need. So when we look at total permits per year compared to the amount of housing we need year over year, we still need to roughly double compared to the previous five years our overall housing production for renters. Now, the harder part is our lowest-income households need about 10 times as much housing as we have produced over the last five years. And here's where this gets really challenging because I think from a moral perspective and from a, like, what do we need in the community? We would say, yeah, we need 10 times more affordable housing. The issue is, we would need 10 times more subsidy in order to achieve that amount of housing. And what we're seeing from both the federal and the state budgets this year is that subsidy isn't showing up, right? We're not creating new dollars to subsidize the cost of new housing construction. And new housing construction is expensive. It tends to be about $250 a square foot. So we're going to continue to advocate that we need more housing supply for our lowest-income households while we also recognize that's the most difficult segment of the market to serve with new construction because it's expensive and that segment of the market doesn't have enough money to pay for new construction. So we'll talk in a minute about other ways to serve that segment as well. So we also look at how much more for-sale housing demand do we have in the market? And what we're seeing here is a similar story, but there's some difference in terms of nuance. So again, our upper-middle and high-income households are being better served than they were five years ago. We don't need as much additional housing stock for those segments. Whereas, interestingly, our moderate-income households are the least underserved, are the least well-served, right? So we see a 51% increase in need for households earning $53,000 to $85,000 a year, meaning they need homes for sale between $170,000 and $275,000. That used to be, in fact, just pre-COVID, that was the median house price in Grand Rapids, right? The average house available for sale was between $170,000 and $270,000. That's no longer the case. Average home price now in Grand Rapids is $300,000. And that's for mostly older housing stock that's 60 to 80 years old and probably needs $50,000 or $60,000 worth of reinvestment over the next 10 years. But here's where it gets really interesting is the drop in need among households earning below $53,000 a year. We believe the reason for that drop in need is because they no longer qualify for a mortgage they can afford. And so it doesn't mean that we don't need more for-sale housing at that lower price point. It means unfortunately, those households are much likely to be renters for quite a bit longer. And so that then will compound upon our rental demand across the city of Grand Rapids. We need more rental product because fewer people are able to get into homeownership opportunities. And again, when we talk about the cost of construction, it's very difficult to build a brand-new home that is affordable to somebody earning less than $55,000 a year. So in the for-sale category, we're not building a lot of for-sale housing in Grand Rapids. And I'm guessing you can imagine why. Mostly when we build for-sale housing in Michigan, it's single-family homes on individual lots that have 5,000 square feet or more in terms of lot area. We generally build bigger houses. There aren't a lot of lots left available in Grand Rapids. There are some, right? The economic development team and the land bank have been working to release more properties for for-sale housing, but we just don't have a lot of lots that we're used to building single-family homes on. And we'll talk about opportunities to solve for that. So we need 16 times as much construction for homeowners. And I want you to be thinking about, what are all the ways you can own a home that aren't necessarily a single-family house on an individual lot? We need 21 times as much construction for households who can afford $171,000 to $275,000, right? So that's a lot more housing available for for-sale buyers. Big challenges, right? So before we get into solutions, I want to talk about the threat that this poses. When we have a scarcity of supply in the marketplace, we get competition, right? That competition generally pushes prices up. And what then happens is our highest-income households are able to out-compete our lowest-income households for the available supply. And so that's going to push our lowest-income households either out of homeownership and into renting or down the economic ladder of opportunity into less and less ideal renting situations until they get to the point where they're doubling up or they've got to move out of the community entirely. And worst-case scenario, we have roughly one-half of 1% who experience homelessness for a brief period or a long period of time. So we talked a little bit already about household growth, upward economic mobility, commuters on the move. These are the three factors that are most driving housing demand in Grand Rapids. It's not yet population growth, although I would posit to you, if we were adding a lot of additional housing units, we would see population growth in the city of Grand Rapids. The constraining factor on population is frankly availability of supply. It's not that we don't have people who want to move into the city. So if anybody took an economics course in high school or college, you'll remember these simple supply and demand graphs. Again, when we don't have a lot of a thing, but a lot of people want that thing, what happens to price? Goes up, right? And so that's what's happening in the housing market. But dissimilar from a traditional commodity, right? When eggs got really expensive, we would say, I guess we're going to eat less eggs, right? Or instead of getting a dozen, we're going to get six. When housing gets really expensive, we don't have those same options available. You can't just overnight say, ah, instead of, you know, living in this 2,000-square-foot house, we're going to downsize to 1,000 square feet. There's this long, cumbersome process to figure out how to downsize. And then you're saddled with, well, but my interest rate is pretty good right now and my taxes are going to become uncapped if I sell this and buy a new one. And so there are all these barriers in place that prevent somebody from just saying, oh, I'm going to take on a smaller housing product. And so that's called inelastic pricing. It means even as prices go up, we're still stuck making many of the same decisions we always have. And the other factor here is over the last 30 or 40 years, we have seen the average house size continue to increase, meaning the share of new construction that is smaller homes, homes designed for either smaller households or just families that like sharing space, has declined precipitously. We're not building small homes anymore. We're mostly building big houses. Part of that is due to construction costs, part of it is due to wage and labor competition. But there is a significant mismatch between household sizes. Whoops, let's do, no, I'll come back to it. We'll talk about household sizes in a second. There's a big mismatch between household sizes and availability of housing stock. The other really important element here is we know from the National Association of Realtors that half of all homebuyers want to be in walkable amenity-rich, place-based neighborhoods. They want to be able to walk to the grocery store, they want to be able to walk to a cafe or a restaurant or a bar. If they have kids, they want to be able to walk their kids to school or to the library. They will pay more for less square footage and less yard if those kinds of neighborhoods are available. Now, what's important is less than 3% of the land area in West Michigan has created those kinds of walkable, amenity-rich, place-based neighborhoods. So half the market wants to live in the kinds of neighborhoods we have in the city of Grand Rapids, right? Wealthy Street, Creston, Bridge Street, South Town, right? We have some of those neighborhoods. Half the market wants that. Only 3% of the land area in the region allows for that. And so what's going to happen to price in those places? It's going to keep going up, right? So on the other side of the equation, when I'm not in the city of Grand Rapids, I'm out in Kent County and in Ottawa County advocating for some of the same messaging to our townships, to our suburban cities, saying, we need to build more place-based, amenity-rich neighborhoods in your community. This isn't just the job of the city of Grand Rapids or the city of Kentwood. This is a regional shared responsibility. But in the meantime, it's important that we know in Grand Rapids, there is a lot of demand for the kinds of neighborhoods that have been established here. And our inability to accommodate that demand with an adequate amount of supply will continue to push prices up. No matter how much we try to throw subsidies at a handful of developments every year, prices will continue to outpace wages because of that scarcity in supply. So I'm almost done, I promise. Going forward, solving the problem. The regulatory environment is the first step. It is not the only step. But until we have a regulatory environment that allows us to build the kind of housing that people can afford in the community without subsidy, right? Acknowledging we need to bring subsidy to the table whenever possible, but there isn't going to be enough for all the people that need it. We need to have a regulatory environment that allows us to build small homes, that allows us to build attached homes, that allows us to build homes on top of homes. We also call those apartments or condominiums, right? We need to allow many more places to do those kinds of things, but in high-quality, amenity-rich neighborhoods, meaning access to green space is important, access to mobility choice is important. A lot of people are going to drive and a lot of people are going to want to ride bikes or walk or push a stroller or roll in a wheelchair. And creating all of those opportunities is important. The second one is, once we have the regulatory environment right, it's making sure that our development incentives are aligned to the conditions of the market. And so this is where planning and economic development come together in a happy marriage, is thinking about how do we make sure that our incentives support what the community master plan is calling for and support what we know the community needs. And I think largely, the city of Grand Rapids does a really good job of this. There's always room for incremental improvement, but we're doing a pretty good job. And then third, it's figuring out, okay, for all the people that we can't solve for by a fixed regulatory environment and appropriate economic development incentives, where do we still have gaps and how do we fill them, right? And that's where subsidies come in, that's where philanthropy comes in, that's where we start thinking about impact investors and corporate investors, all of those things. But it's hard to go to philanthropy or corporate investors and say, hey, we need you to subsidize this thing. And we're unintentionally making it much more expensive than it needs to be, and we want you to subsidize that unintended regulatory reform, right? So know that. There are typically five ways that development costs money. There's land, construction, design, permitting and professional fees and financing. You can see how we tend to break those costs out across a development project. Whether we recognize it or not, local government has the ability to impact all five of those categories, right? And so there's thinking about land use, our density requirements, our minimum lot width and area requirements, setbacks in green space. All of those things impact our availability to use land efficiently. Construction costs are influenced by use restrictions, floor area, parking requirements. Building code reform is a separate thing. You guys don't have control over that, but it's also an important element. And then the utility connection fees. Design and permitting and professional fees, these are really impacted by how long it takes to get through the process. Grand Rapids, I think, is as good as anyone in the state of Michigan. So know that there isn't like monumental room here to improve, but there is room to improve. There always is. And so thinking about how do we get people to understand exactly what the community is asking for and make that process really, really easy, right? If they're building what you want, it should be a super quick approval. And generally, I think that can be true. And then financing too, this is about time, right? If somebody's got a loan that's charging them 8% or 9% interest on land plus professional fees and it takes six months to get through a process, that's six months' worth of interest on hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so just thinking about how do we get people through the process more quickly? So this is all to say, the regulatory environment is the first step. It is not by any means the only step, but making sure that the zoning ordinance and the permitting and processing of applications is smooth and efficient is the first step to reducing costs. And then it's really getting clear about how do we bring our incentives to the table and how do we bring our subsidy partners to the table? And so I know you guys are embarking on zoning rewrite. And so as you think about creating more available and affordable homeownership opportunities as well as more available and affordable rental opportunities, I'm grateful for the opportunity to share the data with you and we'd love to continue to be a partner with you as you craft new language to support the community. So happy to take questions or get out of your hair.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions for him?
Well, always, I'm always interested to hear what you have to say. And you explain it in a way that we can see all of the factors that line into it. This isn't to, this is a question, I just read this about a month ago. And I don't know that it has a lot to do with zoning, but it was a surprise to me in 2025. And that was that, I don't know if it's just the city of Grand Rapids or Kent County, 72% of white people own their homes and only 20, 24% of people of color. And I know the causes of that, redlining, mortgage, passing of wealth and, you know, who accumulates and those kinds of things. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, it's pretty close. I think it's 72% homeownership among the white population and I believe it's 39% among our African-American population.
Oh, okay. So a little higher. Maybe it was included Latinos or others?
Yeah, could be. I think we do have one of the largest disparities in the United States.
Yes.
Right? So I mean, we're like bottom five in terms of the breadth of disparity between white homeownership and black and brown homeownership.
And maybe this is for individual discussion and not before the Planning Commission, but I don't know if there's anything the Planning Commission can do about that except to get more affordable low-income housing, but.
Yeah, I mean.
That's mostly rental when you're looking at that.
Well, I think it's both.
And there's some things, Habitat for Humanity, things like that.
Yes. So if, if we require minimum lot areas in terms of, let's think about all the lots that we have in the city of Grand Rapids and all the places where you could subdivide a lot and put a new house on it. And the opportunity to put a small house versus a large house, right? The more opportunities we create for homeownership, even when the next thing we build is $280,000 and not specifically affordable, capital A affordable, what we're starting to do is dissipate demand, right? And so the more opportunity we create in the community, the less we have to subsidize the folks who really need it, right? Right now, what we're struggling with is middle-class households need subsidies, right? We've got people earning $75,000 a year that can't afford housing.
Right.
And the reason for that is we've seen costs explode due to frankly scarcity, right? And so the more we can get a handle on scarcity and provide housing abundance in the community, then we're still going to have households that are of a low enough income that they need a subsidy, but we can focus our subsidies on those households and not the middle-income folks who are earning good wages. They just don't have an option available to them. And so that doesn't specifically get to the wealth and homeownership disparity among races, but it does start to help. And so then on top of that, we need partner organizations who are directly working on that disparity and thinking about how do we focus homeownership programming, down payment assistance programming, ensuring that we've got those walk-along kinds of programs to work with populations that have been underserved and disenfranchised over a long period of time.
Thank you so much.
Other questions for Ryan? Awesome. All right, thank you. I imagine we'll be able to get these slides sent to us.
Yeah.
Cool. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot, Ryan.
Thank you.
All right. Before we jump into public hearings, anyone have a conflict of interest on any of today's cases? on any of today's cases? Okay, seeing none, then we will go to 735 Ritzma Court Southwest.
So, our first case on the agenda is coming from the Hispanic Center of Western Michigan. They're requesting approval for a new three-story facility to include a childcare center, a community center, and offices for the Hispanic Center staff. The subject property is, it's 1.34 acres, it's located on the north side of Ritzma Court with Hall Street right-of-way to the north, Grand Rapids Public School, Cesar E. Chavez Elementary to the east, and Victor's Auto to the west. It is in a traditional neighborhood, low-density residential zone district. There is industrial zone district to the west, and on the next slide, I'll show the impact of that. And a building height of three stories and childcare center and community center uses all require special land use approval in the traditional neighborhood, low-density residential zone district. So, on this slide, you can see the subject property with the surrounding properties and uses. The property to the west and the Hall Street right-of-way to the north are 10 to 30 feet lower in grade than the subject property. There are very steep slopes here that drop off quickly. And there's not much space between, and you can see from the undeveloped area on this slide that it really, that those areas cannot be developed, the slope is too steep. Ritzma Court, as you can see on this slide as well, is 25 feet in width. It's not a typical width for a public street. It functions more like an alley. Most of the residential properties, the houses that are on Ritzma Court are through lots, and the front of the house is on the next street to the south, believe that is Liberty Street. There are one or two houses that do face Ritzma, but most of the houses face the south. And that, so Ritzma really functions more like an alley. The existing site is improved with 6,000-square-foot building that was formerly a church, and paved surface parking. This slide shows the site as it exists today. And this is the proposed site plan. The existing church building will be demolished, and the pavement will be removed. A new 18,000-square-foot, three-story building will be constructed in the general location of where the church was sited previously. The building will be set back 44 feet from the front property line at Ritzma, with the main entrance facing south on Ritzma. And the setback, the side setbacks on the east side and the north side are approximately 20 feet from the property line. I don't know if I mentioned earlier that this drive along the east property line is, it's not a public drive, it's a drive that belongs to the Grand Rapids Public Schools. And so, that is, that is a side property line. So, as I mentioned, a building height of three stories is a special land use in a residential zone district. I'm including these slides, this is the existing building. And I wanted to show you, give you an idea of how the site has been, the building and the site are working together. And I'll show you the proposed building elevations in a moment. The building, from this point of view, as it will be constructed, will appear to be two stories in height. It will be 24 feet from grade along the south and the east sides of the building. As we move to the other side, and again, this is the existing building, not the proposed building, you can see the site, the grade of the site drops significantly at the back. So, here are the proposed building elevations on the south and east. The building will function as a two-story building and will be 24 feet from grade. When you move to the west and the north sides of the building, the grade change is being taken advantage of here to allow for that third story, which will, which will be exposed on those sides of the building. So, when it is three stories from grade, it will be 35 feet high. And a building height of three stories or 45 feet is what? 45 feet would be the maximum. So, it's well within the maximum and will functionally appear to be a two-story building from the street. So, as I mentioned, and you can see on this elevation, the lower level will be below grade, except where it is exposed on the west side of the building. The building, we'll talk about materials, the building will be finished of brick and stone veneer, and both horizontal and vertical siding. If we go back to the site plan, you can see there, aside from the north side of the building, it projects out. Otherwise, the facade variation, the change in materials, is intended to provide that facade variation of the building. The minimum transparency requirements are met and are detailed in the staff report. And if we could go on to talk about the uses, this lower level is the area of the building in which the childcare center will occupy. It is, it is a special land use, and there are some, some use requirements. There's, there will be... You can see on this slide, there are stairs that lead down to that building entrance on the lower level. That lower-level building entrance will be the main entrance of the childcare center, and I will defer to the applicant to provide more operational details of the use. There will also be a playground constructed north of the parking lot, and there will be a retaining wall separating the playground from the parking lot that will range from five to seven feet high. So, the playground will be at a lower level from the parking lot. And before I leave the site plan, I will mention that the parking lot will have one-way circulation traveling from the west entrance to the east. And that is intended to facilitate pickup and drop-off, which I will go into in a little bit. I also want to mention, there is landscaping proposed. You will see on this, this plan, there are no pedestrian walkways proposed in the parking lot. And one thing I would ask the Planning Commission to consider would be a condition of approval for a pedestrian walkway to be included along the north side of the parking lot, to provide safe passage from the parking lot to the childcare entrance and the main entrance of the building. There's not a lot of room to work with. You can see it's a very narrow lot. The landscape buffer at the front of the property is proposed to be eight feet. The landscape screening requirement for a parking lot is a five-foot minimum. So, there's a little bit of wiggle room there, and there's potential that this drive aisle could be narrowed in width to accommodate a five-foot-wide walkway along the north side of the parking lot. So, in regards to the childcare center, the zoning ordinance requires an outdoor play area and fencing, and that ultimately is regulated by the state. Childcare center requires state licensing, and so while it's in our zoning ordinance, we also do, it has to be provided, and the state will ensure that it meets their requirements. And as I mentioned, the play area will be fenced and protected from both the parking lot and the steep slopes to the north. The hours of operation are detailed in the staff report, and I'll defer to the applicant to speak more about those details. 50 children, care for 50 children will be available, and there will be eight employees. Part of the consideration for the Planning Commission is vehicle drop-off and pickup, and the impacts to the neighborhood. The vehicles, based on the length of the parking lot, there is space for about seven vehicles to stack within the parking lot if students or children are going to be dropped off. Now, stacking should be on-site. The public street should not be used for stacking vehicles for pickup and drop-off. The applicant indicated that there would be a 30-minute window for drop-off in the morning, and a one-hour window for pickup in the afternoons or evenings. And in speaking and conversations with the City of Grand Rapids Mobile GR Department, it really, pickup and drop-off can be handled in one of two ways. Either drop-off is handled through circulating vehicles, or, and that would require maybe a longer window of time for dropping off and picking up, to allow for more dispersed vehicles on the site, to arrive and leave at different times. Or, the parents would park their vehicle and walk the child to the entrance. And given the site constraints and the size of the public street in front, that's something the Planning Commission should consider exploring with the applicant, and determining which way. The community center and Hispanic Center office staff will have hours of operation within the childcare center operations. So, pickup and drop-off should not interfere with the need for staff to park in the lot. So, there could be some coordination there if the parking spaces are used for pickup and drop-off. And again, if that's the case, this pedestrian walkway along the north side of the parking lot would be essential to have included in the plan. I will also mention that there are no sidewalks on either side of Ritzma. It's a very narrow street, and there's no room for sidewalks to be provided on the public, public right-of-way. It is, the property and the use should be connected to the public sidewalk system. There is, you can see a little bit in this image, there is a public sidewalk on Ritzma east of the property, connecting Grand, Cesar E. Chavez to this drive on the school property. So, I would ask the Planning Commission to consider, including as a condition of approval, that a public sidewalk be incorporated into the plan at the east side of the property, and then connecting by pedestrian walkway to the parking lot and the main entrance of the building, to help connect the use and the property to the public way and the transit system and the corridor along Cesar Chavez. The community center is also a special land use. There are no use regulations in the zoning ordinance, so I'll let the applicant talk about the uses there. And really, under consideration are the impacts to the neighboring residential properties of the community center use at this property. There are 28 employees, and that will lead us to the number of parking spaces. There are 31 parking spaces provided on the property. The zoning ordinance for a childcare center and a community center together requires a minimum of 44 parking spaces. So, there is a deficit of 13 parking spaces. Parking is permitted on Ritzma, as narrow as it is, with seasonal parking on the south side of the street. And there is a transit stop on Cesar E. Chavez with two rapid bus routes that serve the area, and that stop is within 1,000 feet of the subject property. So, through the availability of public transit and parking available on the streets, the Planning Commission may include a waiver of the need for those 13 parking spaces. I'll let the applicant provide a summary of their neighborhood engagement efforts, but I will mention that letters of support were received by the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association, Roosevelt Park Neighborhood Association, and the Grand Rapids Public Schools. So, in sum, we are asking the Planning Commission to consider the impacts of the daily operations of the childcare center and community center on uses of the neighboring residential properties, whether the change in building materials meets the facade variation requirements, and the adequacy of the proposed parking and internal circulation. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Laura. Any questions for Laura?
I do have a question. And the current facility, is this is replacing the current facility that's across the street?
It's my understanding that yes, and that they will be moving, and I'll let the applicant go into more detail for that.
Okay. And they do food distribution from that facility currently, certain times, is that part of this?
That was not included in the application, and they can provide that information. I think that that would be important to explore, especially along the lines of people coming and going from the site.
Thank you.
Do you know how tall the current church is on the property?
I don't, and that's a really good question. On the city assessor's website, it says that it's one story, and I think it's just one really tall story, but I don't know the height.
In your calculation for parking, is it just based on staffing, parking needs, or as a community center, I would think there are workshops, I think it mentioned it in the application, events of different things? Does it include parking for participants, customers, clients, whatever?
So, the zoning ordinance parking minimums are based on formulas, and the childcare center requires 15 spaces, and that's based on the number of students and employees. So, one parking space for every eight students plus one per employee. So, that added to be 15 parking spaces. A community center requires one parking space for every 1,000 square feet, plus one parking space per classroom, auditorium, and office. So, you know, how those parking calculations were devised, I imagine it took into account the way the uses operate.
Any other questions for Laura? All right, thank you. I'll invite the applicant up.
Good afternoon. My name is Nathan Palmer, and I represent the Hispanic Center with Pinnacle Construction Group. All right. You have to forgive me, this is the first time I've done this, so do you have any questions, or do you want to start?
Do you know, yeah, do you want to ask about the food distribution?
So, yeah, I just was curious about the food distribution that happens at the current facility, and how that would, kind of how traffic flow would work in this current?
So, the food distribution, to my knowledge, would stay at the existing facility at 1204, and then the traffic flow as far as the new facility is concerned for all the different uses?
No, I just know that during the food distribution time, that Cesar Chavez has a traffic issue, right? Because as folks wait to get the food, and was just curious if it's translating into this location, how that, how that traffic flow would happen?
Should not impact this property, is it staying at its existing location?
Okay, thank you.
In terms of the request to incorporate a pedestrian connection on the north side of the parking lot, and connection of the use and property to the public sidewalk, is that something that would be workable for y'all?
I think it would be workable. I just would ask the benefit of having a sidewalk, the length of the property, is it... Is it, that portion of the property is a parking lot? And the main entrance is to the south. So we would be more than happy to figure out how can we get pedestrian traffic to that main entrance? Yeah.
So the sidewalk would be, the public sidewalk would be, start at the eastern corner of the property and extend to the parking lot. And then there would be two pedestrian walkways. One would connect that sidewalk to the main entrance and the other would run the length of the property, or length of the parking lot along the north side.
Right. To get pedestrians safely separated from car traffic from the parking lot to the entrance of the building.
Yes, provide safe passage. So people don't need to walk through the parking lot to get from their vehicle to the childcare entrance.
Yeah, no worries.
Awesome. Do we have other questions?
Go ahead.
Nathan, can you also discuss the management of the parking lot, preferring whether or not to have parents park in the spaces or to extend the hours of operation for the childcare facility?
Great questions. So one of the things that we currently have drawn in is a dual stacking line here towards the exit. And the recognition that if for some reason at drop off or pickup, every spot is full and there's nowhere to park, you still have the center mass plus the two lines to get out. So it adds more than just the seven vehicles. We'd be more than willing to consider reducing or elongating the drop off and pickup times to accommodate so that we don't have traffic congestion on Ritzma Court.
Can you remind me how many children, the capacity for the childcare center?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thought it was 50, but I could, is it 50?
Approximately 50, yes.
So that would be supposedly somewhere between around 40 cars coming, maybe, give or take?
Yes, if every child is dropped off with one vehicle.
Nathan, for the hours of operation for the center itself, I think it's nine to five.
Correct.
Are there evening courses or classes that are being taught at this facility? Is the intent for that?
To my knowledge, at this current juncture, there isn't. There may be in the future, but at this time, I don't believe there is any.
Thank you.
Is there on-street parking nearby here?
Yeah, on Ritzma Court.
Just Ritzma Court?
Yes. Well, and Cesar Chavez.
Okay.
And then also the main entrance for pickup and drop off, because the main amount of staff will not be there between nine and five, the opportunity for parents or family members to drop children off if they have to be at work at those times captures that opportunity. So depending on the influx or the flow of how many kids come, they can also use the main entrance to the south.
And do you, do you know if, in terms of how employees get to work, like are some of them in the neighborhood? Like is everyone driving a single occupancy vehicle? Or are they taking other kind of modes of transportation?
Great question. I believe that they arrive at work in multiple different ways. But the Hispanic Center also is across the street and they have their own parking lot at there as well. So not every single employee who's going to be working at the facility may be parking at that facility at that time. And the recognition that the parking needs for the community they're serving is higher than the staff.
Is there handicap? I think you mentioned that you go down, you have to go down some steps because of the slope to get into the daycare center. What about handicap accessibility?
Great question. So the main entrance to the south has a ramp to get into. And then we have an elevator inside the property that has a stop at every level.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nathan, do you know if there is, is there consideration for staff to be available to help navigate the traffic, particularly during the pickup and drop off times?
I don't know if there's going to be enough staff to be able to navigate traffic at those times. That's something that I can work with our client on to determine if that was a need. I do know that there's enough staff to intake early and late drop off, early drop off and late pickup.
Anything else to? No. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Yeah. Okay. I will open up the public hearing. If you're here on this case, feel free to come up and address the commission. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and turn to my fellow commissioners.
Well, I think the, obviously the improvement, or the addition of the sidewalk for both safety and pedestrian traffic would be important to accommodate users of this building. So, and it seems that the applicant is open to that. I think that might be a condition.
Yeah, one thing that our, our report, our staff report wants us to consider is materials and facade variation and whether we think what's proposed here is appropriate. I personally think it is. But I wanted to make sure if we had discussion, we need to have that.
Yeah, I also am comfortable with it. I think it being set back, really, I mean, the front, or so to speak of this building is right, quite a ways back off the main road due to that parking lot from GRPS and everything. So I think, given that, there's a little more flexibility in my mind. But yeah, I'm comfortable with it as is.
I am also, it does appear to me, and I was reading this at home and now, that the entrances are to the west and the south. I wonder if there are any entrances on, on the east or the north, given that they're across the street from their existing, I don't know, just for pedestrian traffic?
It's not directly across because the school is in between it.
Oh, that's right.
So yeah, there's not one on the, to the drive to the school.
Okay, okay.
But there is an east entrance, right? So there are east, west, and south entrances.
Okay. Maybe I didn't see them all. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments here? I'm excited for this project. I think it's going to be a huge asset to the neighborhood. The current center already is and so an expansion of this. And obviously, we know that childcare, huge shortage there. So this will be, this will be great. I'm in full support. Go ahead.
Could we ask, or could I include one condition to the?
Yeah, please.
Okay. That a public sidewalk be constructed along Ritzma, the Ritzma frontage between the existing walkway along GRPS Drive to the new facility parking lot and an internal walkway to be constructed connecting the sidewalk to the front door of the building.
Cool. Would you mind repeating that one? Whoever makes the motion, make the motion. That's all right. No, thank you so much. Is someone willing to make the motion? Rick, you haven't made, oh, go ahead.
All right. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the planning commission approves the special land use and site plan review request of Hispanic Center of West Michigan to construct a new three-story facility to include a childcare center, a community center, and the Hispanic Center of Western Michigan offices at 735 Ritzma Court Southwest for the following reasons. The proposed use will be consistent with the purpose and intent of the master plan and zoning ordinance, including the zone district, because the proposed use will support the intent of the 2024 Community Master Plan to include small office, educational, and civic uses intent within a compact neighborhood and align with the intent of the Granville Avenue area-specific plan by supporting the relocation and growth of an organization that is desired for the area. The proposed use will meet the site plan review standards of Section 5.12.8.E. because a variance has been granted to allow the surface parking lot to be located in the front yard due to the natural constraints of steep slopes on the property. And the building will be cited in the general location of the existing building. The proposed use will be compatible, harmonious, and appropriate with the character and uses of the neighborhood, adjacent properties, and the natural environment because the Hispanic Center of Western Michigan is located, currently located in the vicinity. And the new location will allow for the organization to provide continued and expanded services to the neighborhood. Potentially adverse effects arising from the proposed use will be minimized because the building will be oriented facing Ritzma Court. And parking will be provided onsite with a landscape buffer to provide screening from adjacent residential uses. The proposed use will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to existing or future uses or to the public welfare because the outdoor play area for the childcare center is located away from nearby residential properties. And the one-way vehicle circulation onsite is intended to provide efficient traffic flow for daily pickup and drop off for the childcare center. The proposed use will not adversely affect the walkability of the neighborhood, impair pedestrian circulation patterns, disrupt the continuity of the urban street wall, or hinder the creation of a pedestrian-oriented environment because a cross-access agreement allows sidewalks on the neighboring school property to be utilized to provide a pedestrian connection to the right-of-way. The building and site area required for the proposed use will retain as many natural features of the landscape as practicable because site grading and construction will not encroach areas of steep slope. The proposed use will safeguard the health, safety, and general welfare of the public because adequate public or private infrastructure and services already exist or would be provided at no additional cost. And the proposed use will not be detrimental to the financial stability or the economic welfare of the city because the uses are intended to support the needs of the community. Be it further resolved, that the following conditions of approval shall apply to this project. Standard conditions set A. That the application and plans, read all these, yeah? Thank you. That the application and plans submitted by the applicant and signed, dated, and stamped by the planning director shall constitute the approved plans, except if plan elements do not meet ordinance requirements and/or is amended in this resolution. That the use shall operate according to the application and per testimony as recorded in the planning commission minutes. That this approval does not include any proposed signs. And any future signs shall be subject to the requirements of Article 15 of the ordinance and permits received prior to installation. That a land use development services permit, building permit, and all other required permits be obtained from the City of Grand Rapids prior to construction, demolition, or operation. That any expansion of the approved special land use requires an additional special land use review and approval by the planning commission. That the proposed use will comply with all other applicable city ordinances and policies and state laws. And that this approval shall take effect 16 calendar days after the date of the planning commission's decision. Two, that a waiver of 13 required parking spaces is approved with this request. Three, that construction shall be limited to previously improved areas, outside areas of steep slopes. Four, that a pedestrian walkway shall be provided along the north side of the parking lot. And five.
That a public sidewalk be constructed, oops, rookie. That a public sidewalk shall be constructed along Ritzma frontage between the existing walkway along GPRS Drive to the new facility parking lot and an internal walkway to be constructed to connect this sidewalk to the front building, the front door of the building.
Support.
All right. Who wants it?
That's me. I don't know. I said it.
Okay. Yep. All right. All right. I have a motion and support. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. Let's move right along to our next case, 45 Ottawa Northwest.
The next item on the agenda is a request to establish an outdoor alcohol service area and to hold up to 10 outdoor events with live entertainment annually at 45 Ottawa Avenue Northwest. Additionally, the applicant is requesting to use the accessory parking lot associated with Gimme's Paring Grill for paid public parking. Now, using a paid public parking lot for paid off-street parking is at that point considered a secondary primary use on the site and requires special lane use approval. The 2024 Community Master Plan designates this area as downtown. And this site is also included in the GR Forward Area Specific Plan. The plan generally discourages new surface parking lots, but the plan also recognizes that parking facilities are necessary to provide vehicle storage in downtown, or for downtown uses, even if these facilities don't contribute to the experience of a downtown area. The subject property is located in and surrounded by the TNCC Zone District with the Grand Rapids Art Museum to the north, the Monroe Center parking structure to the east with some restaurants as well, a mixed-use building to the south, as well as a surface parking lot to the west. To provide some background on Gimme's, they are a full-service restaurant with alcohol service. They have nine indoor golf simulators with three private party rooms. There are multiple bars, a lounge area, and a dining space. The restaurant has approval to operate until 10:00 PM on Sunday through Thursday and until 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturday. Now, the applicant is requesting to extend their hours of operation on Friday and Saturday until midnight. And that can be done so administratively, but it has been wrapped into your conditions of approval today. The restaurant is also located in the central downtown refreshment area, or what we would otherwise call a social zone. And this permits businesses to sell alcoholic beverages in properly identified takeout cups that pedestrians can carry within the area. The two-story building is located on the southwest corner of Ottawa Avenue and Lewis Street Northwest with driveways along both street frontages that provides ingress and egress to the site. In May of this year, a LUDS permit was issued to reconfigure the surface parking lot layout. In addition, add entry gates that you can see in these images here that are just conceptual plans, as well as adding some landscape areas and a dumpster enclosure onto the surface parking lot. The site plan that was submitted for both LUDS and this application before you today shows the bar cart located in this first parking space here outside of the landscape area. And for daily operations, this will serve customers of the social zone. And so customers will use this sidewalk here to come onto the property and grab drinks and then continue on within the social zone area. And I would just ask the applicant to confirm that the bar cart is no longer in this area and it is instead moved into that first parking space as the site plan indicates. Relative to the parking request, the applicant has been operating a paid public parking business on the site using Air Garage. And the applicant is before you today asking to formalize this use and to take over operations. The parking lot will be open 24 hours for seven days a week and have a fee of $4 an hour with the maximum daily fee of $24 an hour. As well as during special events, the fee will match that of surrounding parking spaces being $24. For example, when Van Andel has concerts, they will be $24 for the parking on those days. The parking lot will also be under video surveillance. And if any issues arise during hours of operation... hours of operation for Gimme's, customers of the parking can enter through this entrance here and talk to any managers that are onsite at that time. And during after-hours, there will be a on-call manager for people to call if there is any issues, or they will be directed to call the Grand Rapids Police Department if there's any emergencies. And should the planning commission approve this parking request today, a parking facility license will be issued to the applicant. Relative to the outdoor events, the applicant has indicated that the maximum attendance for any of these events would be approximately 425 people, and this does include staff members. They have indicated that somewhere between five to 15 staff members will be dedicated to just working the events separately from the indoor operations of the restaurant. For the site layout for these events, there will be perimeter fencing shown here in the image along the western and southern property lines, and there will be security personnel onsite during the entirety of the event, during setup and teardown. The registration area will be in this east driveway area with a tent and a temporary sign to indicate that this is where guests will enter. During the events, this northern driveway will be a service entrance for vendors to drop off, as well as the temporary dumpster being relocated to that area instead of being on the parking lot as it was shown in the previous plans. There will also be a greenery wall that will provide some privacy to these outdoor restrooms that will be brought onto the site during events. The surface parking lot itself will be transformed into an alcohol service area that will include vendor tables around the perimeter with some guest chairs and tables, as well as some trash bins, some tents, and a stage in this area here to provide some live entertainment for the guests. The bar cart that is normally located in this parking space here will be moved closer to the building in the center of the parking lot, and this is to provide food and drink during the events. And I would just ask that the planning commission confirm with the applicant whether or not outdoor food preparation is anticipated during these outdoor events. For the live entertainment aspect, the events will generally be held on Fridays and Saturdays, and they will end no later than 11:45 p.m. on the weekends, and if any events do take place on Sunday through Thursday, they will end by 10:00 p.m. Some of the planned events that the applicant has outlined in your packets today include a chili cook-off that will include some ambient music and some occasional announcements when presenting the awards of the chili cook-off, a St. Patrick's Day party in which they will have some live Irish music, a Kentucky Derby watch party, and a Halloween party where a DJ will provide dancing music. And the applicant has stated that the Halloween party is the only event in which the live entertainment will be the main attraction of the event. Otherwise, the DJs will just provide some ambient music. Otherwise, the applicant intends to follow the city's noise control ordinance in regards to these live entertainments and any amplified sounds that they will have. The details of each event will be administratively reviewed through temporary use permits, and at that time, if any elements of the events require any additional permitting, such as a building permit for a tent or anything of that nature, those permits will be obtained at that time. There are several downtown businesses where live outdoor entertainment have been approved, and those businesses have been outlined in your packets. To date, we have received no letters either in support or opposition for this request. And overall, the planning commission should consider relative to the outdoor events, live entertainment, and the alcohol service is the appropriateness of the event hours, the days of the week, the frequency of these events, and the potential adverse effects that the proposed uses may have on adjacent properties, as well as the appropriateness of the temporary structures and uses on the property itself. Relative to the paid public parking, the planning commission should consider whether the use of surface parking addresses the goals of the 2024 Community Master Plan, the GR Forward Plan, and the zoning ordinance, as well as whether the establishment of this paid public parking could hinder any future redevelopment on the site. In summary, the applicant is requesting approval to use the accessory parking lot associated with Gimme's Par and Grill as paid public parking, to establish an outdoor alcohol service area, and to hold up to 10 events with live entertainment annually. Does the planning commission have any questions for me?
Thank you, Avery. Any questions for Avery?
Avery, are the times in which they have proposed consistent with others that are doing outdoor entertainment in the downtown?
Yes, so in your packet outlines the other businesses in the area, as well as times that they have been approved for. So some are in generally the same time, but some may go a little bit later.
And I understand that you have to have a permit as well as our consensus. This is maybe, I don't know. So there is lots of great entertainment, and to me, you never can have too much in a downtown area, but if something, when they're permitting, do they look at other, like if you have something at Rosa Parks, or I know at Graham, they have music in the summer on Thursday nights. In the permitting, do they look at all the different things going on to see if there's any conflict between all of this, or is that not a concern?
Perhaps. All of the events that would take place would be within this surface parking lot, so during permitting, they would just basically look and make sure that everything that they're proposing makes sense within the time and the operations on the site, not necessarily if Rosa Parks Circle is having an event.
I have a, just, you mentioned the dumpster, and I see that LUDS permit doesn't include a dumpster enclosure. It says in the narrative that it will be basically negotiated later. Can you talk a little bit about how that works and how approved set of LUDS plans happens without dumpster enclosure or whatever?
Yeah, so that is still a point of conversation between staff and the applicant, and depending on what is approved today, they will finalize those plans. Like I said, this is where the dumpster will be moved, and as you can see, that stage area for the live entertainment will be in that area, and so they just needed a place to temporarily move it, and perhaps the applicant can speak more to what conversations have been had since then, but nothing has been finalized for that portion.
So you at one point stated that their desire is to take this over from Gimme's. So who's going to manage the parking process?
So they will. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear enough by that. So right now, they use Air Garage, which is a third company, and they wouldn't be using them anymore. They would control it themselves, if that makes more sense.
Right, yeah. I just wanted to make sure I heard that correctly.
Yep, thank you for clarifying.
Commissioner, just to let you know that as part of the condition of the LUDS there to finalize that location for the dumpster enclosure. So that's an open, still an open item within the LUDS.
Okay. All right, let's have the applicant come up and add any information we're missing here.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Maraz. I'm the chief investment officer for Rockford. I have spent my entire career redeveloping downtown Grand Rapids, this being really the center of the center of downtown. The history of this building is, as you may recall, was Davenport University for many years. They were our tenant. We've owned this building for almost 20 years now, and when they vacated, we looked at actually redevelopment plans back then. That was more in, I think, 2019, right before our friend COVID hit, and unfortunately, that building sat vacant for nearly four or five years because of demand, lack of demand. At that point, my business partner in the real estate, Mike Van Gessel, he and I owned that building personally. We were really looking at opportunities to really engage and activate that building, more so than an office building, and that's where we met Sam Stover, who's our partner, and we took really matters in our own hands and invested alongside Sam and his team. So we're investors in both, in the building as well as the operations of the business itself. So I'm wearing two hats here presenting today. And so really, over the course of 20 years of owning a lot of real estate downtown, countless subcommittees, thousands of meetings, I've negotiated with every retail commercial tenant that is in our portfolio. Really, the opportunity for engagement for both the community and successive businesses is activation and programming, and that came from consultants like Jeff Speck many years ago who came to town to talk about how to maximize retail and exposure, conversations with our tenants to do special sales and activation. If one were to succeed by just opening doors and hoping people would show up, then that's not going to be the case. So therefore, that's the request that Sam will speak more about around the activation of the parking lot and the live entertainment, especially as we're coming into our one-year anniversary of owning this business in November, and we've learned a lot. So Sam will be able to speak to that. As relates to the parking facility itself, although we own and with our investors a lot of buildings downtown, really none of which came with parking that was accessible or even had parking because of the downtown nature of it. So I will, on that front, when we signed on with Air Garage, we really frankly didn't know that we needed a special land use approval, so when planning staff approached us, we said, absolutely, that's not a problem. We'd be happy to come before this commission and get that formally approved. So just want to reference that, that it was on accident frankly. Air Garage frankly is a stopgap for us. That's why we applied for the LUDS permit to have our own parking control system. Typically, in our other parking facilities, we use Ellis as our manager because they have 24-hour access so people can call if they're stuck in the lot. Those are more in our structured parking lots. We're working through that right now, and just understanding that with the LUDS permit approval, we can do those improvements hopefully in the near future so we can control that. The previous skate system was very antiquated. It did not allow for any transient parking, and it is a benefit both to our customers and to the surrounding area. And really, as a landlord entity, we provided as part of the lease structure to the tenant full control of the parking lot. That way, there isn't a challenge between a landlord who would love to have more parking revenue versus a tenant who would love to activate that lot for business purposes and to attract people, and especially at that level of engagement. As we all know, we just ended up, you know, finished a successful art prize that was successful for our business as well as others because of that activation of the city, and we feel that's really important to really drive people to the business more so than just walk-by traffic. As relates to the dumpster enclosure, that is certainly something that we want to work with the staff on that makes sense. Part of it is we needed to get frankly some of our operations and seasonality underneath our belt first to see the amount of trash that is produced, the number of pickups required, access from the building itself to the dumpsters. I mean, being a building owner and property manager of many, we try to limit that distance as much as possible because it's dirty and it's, and we try to limit any odors or spills or things of that nature. So as we go through that LUDS permit, we definitely want it to be not unsightly and professionally maintained. And then I mentioned the control of the parking. That would be all managed by Sam and his team. So that way, it's full control. They have the managers on staff and have the ability to protect that and then work with all the vendors. With that, I'll turn it over to Sam unless you have any questions directly for me. Otherwise, I can, I'll just, I'll be here.
I think you can go ahead, and then we'll do questions at the end.
Thank you all for your time today. Yeah, so the activation of the parking lot to be utilized for some outdoor venue activities, as in the packet we show, like some possibility of some St. Patty's Day activity, a Kentucky Derby opportunity, chili cook-off, and then, you know, a Halloween party. The other possibilities would be, you know, with the World Cup coming this summer, the new stadium coming in, having a large watch party and doing something outdoors with that. But really, that's kind of all we have in mind right now. We don't have a lot of activities that we'd want to do in that parking lot on a regular basis, but more just around some seasonality opportunities. So with Kentucky Derby in the spring, St. Patty's Day in the spring, and then you have, you know, a chili cook-off in the fall, potential of a Halloween party. That's not anything that we consider would be an annual event, but potentially with chili cook-off and the use of a tent or something like that, you could utilize them both in a timely manner together. But outside of that, just a number of, a few opportunities so we can activate that lot to bring people downtown, to help introduce them to our location, and just be more active in the downtown area. That's really all I have as far as the events, just a handful of them, nothing that is specific on an annual basis other than possibly with St. Patty's Day. You know, we noticed that this past year, St. Patty's Day used to be the St. Patty's Day on Ionia or Irish on Ionia, and then it was switched to Irish off Ionia. I know that was here. We experienced a lot of foot traffic. I don't know exactly what the planning was or how it happened, but we benefited in a sense that a lot of people came to us. So with that, we were like, oh, we have, we're part of the social zone. We have an outdoor bar available. Maybe we should utilize that and just engage in what the community is already doing. So that would be something we'd probably do on an annual basis based on what was already going on. Kentucky Derby Party is something that isn't done right now. We kind of floated out possibly doing it last year. We did it inside the restaurant. We had a lot of good feedback on it. Again, with Kentucky Derby, who doesn't love a big hat, right? So all of those things were engaging. And then chili cook-off, from my understanding, there used to be one downtown many years ago, and the owner that ran a facility, and when he sold his operation, then no one else has picked it up since. My general manager used to work out on the lakeshore, and they used to do one in the Sagatuck area, and he's very familiar with what they did, and it just seemed like an opportunity for us to engage in the community and bring people down to our venue. On top of that, it's going to be something where we raise money for one of the local nonprofits. This year, we're talking with VAI about doing something with them, so those kind of things would be what we do with these large events in the parking lot would be to not just bring customers to ourselves, but also bring them in to help other nonprofit opportunities in the city. Any questions you have for me?
I have a few questions. I don't know if it's for you or you, but can you confirm whether there will be outdoor food preparation associated with these events?
Good question. There will not be. So we have a kitchen that we would do all of our food prep inside, so there would be not any food prep outside at all.
Okay. And then can you confirm that the bar cart is in that, is going to be in that first spot rather than right next to the sidewalk as it's shown in one of those images?
So currently, there's landscaping area there between the sidewalk and where the existing bar cart is. That will be, there'll be more landscaping and new landscaping input there, and then yes, that bar cart will be on pavement in the cart, in the parking lot as shown in the slide.
Okay, awesome. And then one question I have related to making this public parking. My understanding is that you could also make it paid customer parking. So I guess why the choice to do this kind of third-party public parking rather than paid customer parking that you can enforce however? paid customer parking that you can enforce however you would choose?
So I think similar to what Mike had said is it's kind of a stopgap for us, if you will, in the sense that Air Garage came in and allowed us to, with being a restaurant in year one, helping any type of extra revenue we can have to kind of facilitate some of those shortcomings and early learning curves of what we need to do to grow our business, grow our brand, increase awareness of who we are, what we are, those kinds of things. It was an opportunity to just kind of help revenue.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Can you talk a little bit about the management of the parking lot? If someone were to get a ticket or their vehicle gets stuck within the parking lot? How do they, who do they contact?
So there'd be, there's three managers, myself and two others, that would manage all of that. So for the most part, we have somebody in the building almost all day, 24 hours, between operations, cleaning crew, and prep team. There's very few hours of the day. There's not somebody on property. But currently, the way it is, that there's three of us that are on call 24 hours a day. So if there's something with the alarm system or anything would be with parking or anything along those lines, we're the ones that you contact.
So is there a phone number that would be posted on a sign to be able to?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. So there's currently a phone number to the, our business, and then we can set that phone there so it goes directly to one of our cell phones as well.
Okay. And how is ticketing managed? The reason I ask is the planning department sometimes gets calls from Air Garage and Air Park of residents who have been ticketed. They think it's been, it's operated by the city of Grand Rapids rather than a private entity. So we get those calls and complaints.
Yeah.
So we're just wondering how those communications will be, will be had with you folks and how the management of that parking lot is going to be dealt with on a daily basis.
Absolutely. So right now, with Air Garage, we experience people getting tickets and coming in to ask us, like, I just pulled in for a minute to do this and I got a ticket. So we manage all of that right now. So we would definitely have information and postings on there that not only on the entrances and exits, who to contact, how to go about it, or we have people right there in sight as well. So as long as the, when people park there now with the building is open, which is most of the day, and mostly when parking is active, they come in right away. So that would be the easiest thing is just, most of it is, when they're parked, they come in right away to say, hey, why did I get a ticket? And if we're closed, if it's after hours, then there would be postings on how to go about contacting.
Okay, okay. And then can you talk a little bit about the garbage receptacle as well, the dumpster enclosure? Is that stored indoors currently?
It's not. It's in the parking lot currently.
It's in the parking lot.
Yep.
And is there an intent then to have, to incorporate an enclosure into?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So there, we would enclose it. We currently have the company coming five days a week to dump. But we would, the intent with the permit would be have it enclosed and gated or locked so that during non-business hours that it's not accessible.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
It's more for discussion, I think.
Oh, okay. Any other questions? Okay, we'll have you take a seat. I will open up the public hearing. If you are here on this case, please approach the microphone, state your name, and tell us your thoughts.
Hello, everyone. Can you guys hear me? I'm Denise Gilkey. I am the AGM at AC Hotel, which our parking lots kind of meet at the end. Super excited for like activations and things like that, but my immediate focus is at the end of that driveway is our hotel that has seven guest floors and our guest rooms will face their activation of a stage and music. So that is our concern of like, this is awesome for activation, but it could kill our guests' experience if their window is right on the side of that parking lot that will have a stage in parties until midnight. So that is our, that's kind of my only concern. Thank you.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Do you want to come up and address that comment?
Sure thing. I was looking at our application. It was, it was prepared by an employee that is no longer with us, but in number nine of the submission, it says that we have reached out several times to management from the AC Hotel but have not received a response. So I'm not sure. I'm happy to, happy to discuss with you on that certainly. Without her being here, I can't fully answer that, but I think we would, you know, certainly take that under consideration. But I think, I'm not sure what the ordinance, I mean, we would follow all ordinances that other, that other properties would undertake.
Great, okay, thank you. Commissioners?
Yeah, I was just gonna say generally, I don't have a problem with the use of the parking lot for events. I think it's a good activation. I appreciate what Gimme's is doing. I think they provide a unique opportunity downtown as far as golfing and things like that. I don't like the confusion that Air Garage has added around public parking and when it's really private parking. And I have concerns, I guess, about changing the use of this lot to a public use, just because I don't want it to happen with other Air Garage lots. And I don't think we need to be putting more surface lots into public parking uses. And also with the events at Gimme's, I would, yeah, I would love to make sure they can, yeah, work together with the AC Hotel to minimize any adverse effects there, but those are generally my thoughts.
Was I, I thought I understood that Airdrop isn't going to be managing this any longer. It's going to be the owner.
Correct, but it still is public parking. So I think Rick's point was that.
Yeah, I like that. Air Garage won't be here anymore, but then we're changing it from an accessory use to a permanent use of public parking. It's my understanding that that use will go with the land and stay with the land into perpetuity. So that's.
It can't be changed, the use, by a new owner?
I mean, they could come through and change land use, but it would be allowed to be a surface parking lot in perpetuity.
I got you.
And a revenue stream at that, so disincentivizing redevelopment.
Is there, maybe it's for the, is there, for you, is there a way to permit it to be used for parking but not in perpetuity? Or is that what they're asking?
They're asking, that's what they're asking.
I guess when I weigh all that, you know, the idea that it's a pretty small parking lot and it can be used by others, other than those people going to their restaurant, particularly since my sense is that people come downtown and visit multiple places. They make a one place to eat, another place for music or whatever, shopping, whatever they're doing downtown. I like the idea of having some entertainment that's kind of seasonal and when other things are, just to add to what's going on downtown. I think in all cases, hopefully, all of our venues that are doing outdoor kinds of events that might create noise are working with their neighbors on how to minimize any disruption or anything like that. You know, right now, we even get, you know, we've had discussion about what the amphitheater will cause, but overall, I'm in favor of this project.
I, yeah, I think I would echo Commissioner Truer's comments. I'm excited about the opportunity to activate a parking space for events. I do, I do understand the concern of the hotel nearby and, you know, with the hours indicated as it, and even as it relates to the hours of other venues nearby with outdoor opportunities, 11:45 is fairly late even on a weekend.
Yeah.
And I don't know that it's fair to, you know, I don't know how we would navigate, you know, ensuring that they work together to work something out other than work it out here and now. On the parking side, I, yeah, I struggle with that. I understand activate, you know, I mean, may as well use the parking lot that's there for public parking. And at the same time, we have, I don't know, 700 parking spaces right across the street in two separate parking garages. I don't think there's a need for additional parking. And so I do worry about the long-term implications of that. And it's not only this particular case, right? I think that as a city, and this is not our purview, but I don't know that we're ready to, as a city, to start permitting public parking lots, paid public parking lots all throughout our communities downtown or otherwise, because I don't think we've thought through the consequences of that. You know, it changes the, it changes the use of the property long-term. It would change the assessed value of the property, in my opinion. There's a lot of things that need to get worked through, so I'm struggling with that portion of it.
Mike, you know, I've said this before, my, is, I don't know who owns the parking lot behind that space. It's always my hope that the value of the land is going to supersede the value of the revenue from those as demand for more density of the buildings builds downtown. So I don't worry quite as much about surface parking since over the last 40 years, I've watched it shrink and decrease and more buildings go up in its place, which I agree with others is a good thing.
Other thoughts?
What is the ordinance in the city for late-night outdoor music venues? I mean, what, what's the guideline?
So I think, we did get some language in our staff report, so I think it's, it can't be, I don't know, what does it say? You can't hear it 100 feet from the property line during nighttime hours. And nighttime hours are between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM Sunday through Thursday, and 1:00 AM and 7:00 AM Saturday and Sunday.
Well, that's the noise.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh.
No, but just to clarify, that's the noise ordinance. It's not the zoning regulation. We don't really have any specific regulations for these outdoor uses, and that's why it's coming to the planning commission.
Thank you for that clarification, Rosa.
But I can just follow up on that, but we do have authority to set the time limits.
Right.
Okay. Because, yeah, thinking 11:45, I agree that it's kind of late. Well, and, you know, I'm a different demographic, but that's okay.
And in the staff report, we do have a list of some other ones that have been approved. So those we included so you could use for reference.
Right, yeah, and those range from 11:00 PM to 1:00 AM.
In that staff report, is the 20 Monroe Live that they say beer garden amplified, is that outdoor amplified music that they are allowed to have until midnight?
That's what was the purpose.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I too am totally in favor of activation of the parking for events. Obviously, working with the hotel to make sure that we aren't creating a nuisance there and maybe tightening up the hours just a little bit on that. And also not in favor of making public parking a primary use on this property. I think that it still could be a revenue source in terms of calling it customer parking and charging for that and then enforcing, enforcing that however you would like to as it's private property. But I, I am concerned about the spread of this public parking happening throughout downtown, especially as we are talking about the housing crisis and wanting more density and activation downtown. Yeah, I'm struggling with that, too.
I think I'm generally with you on not wanting to see precedents that, yet this site is pretty tight. So as I look at what else could it be, you know, a much larger parking lot, I would be probably feeling more concerned about that. I'm really kind of in the middle on this. I'm not as worried long-term about it.
Okay, well, maybe let's do a kind of gut check here. Is anyone not in favor of the request for events? Do folks want to talk about the hours of those events as it relates to the hotel? Currently, they're proposed to go until 10:00 PM weekdays and 11:45 weekends. I think the 10:00 PM is appropriate.
I think it's hard to differentiate that from others that are permitted to do it. They're up against hotels, they're next to different things. I know, I can remember when Rosa Parks started having, there was, you know, complaints from the Amway Grand Plaza. So I just, you know, just arbitrarily what we think is the right hours and not if we've already permitted it in other places in similar.
Sure, so I mean.
So I'm not sure.
If we look at our staff report here, the ones that, the one that we have listed at 1:00 AM on the weekends is acoustic non-amplified music.
Okay.
At Founders, which, and then the 12:00 AM ones are, they are amplified, but I wouldn't not, I don't think right up against the type of use like a hotel. But then there are several that are 11:00 PM as well. So I mean, obviously, I'm open to.
I mean, if we made a change, it would, I think, 11:00, but I also feel I'm being arbitrary about that, you know? I don't know, does permitting also establish the hours or is that just?
That's going to be established in this motion.
Okay, okay.
Help me understand, so let's say we don't change it, it's 11:45. If the hotel's within 100 feet and there's a complaint about noise, then something would happen, right? Like, it would have to be addressed?
It's greater than 100 feet, though, right?
Greater than 100 feet?
That's my concern.
Sorry, not within.
That's pretty close.
I think what we've had in the past, too, is that it's very hard to enforce. I mean, we've tried to advocate for that, but. I mean, we've, we've, um, tried to advocate for that, but, um, we've had complaints on other venues and, um, it's difficult to measure, difficult to get the right people. You know, it's not just the police department, so. And, and I'm not saying that that shouldn't be changed, but that's one of the things we've been up against.
Helpful context.
You know, and looking at, uh, what staff provided of other venues in the, in the similar geography, you know, what, what Gimms is asking for, particularly on the weekends, is at the later end. You know, there's, like we said earlier, there's two other, uh, venues that are open until midnight on the weekends. But I think out of the two of those, only one of those is still open. So it may be prudent for us to take a look at the, the weekend time and maybe looking to maybe adjust that back so that it's in line with, uh, with, with the majority of the like establishments. So looking at maybe an eleven o'clock weekend end time.
I could agree with that.
Okay. I'm sorry, the public hearing is closed. Okay, and then establishment of the outdoor alcohol service area, also seeing nods. Okay, and then I guess where are we on the public parking? I can do like a, a test vote, right? Like, I could say, who would vote? Who would vote for? Yeah, alright, who would vote for the public parking? Three of us, who would not? What about you? Okay, um.
Can we separate the two?
Oh, you mean, uh, advanced reality?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
I would be in favor, yeah, I would be in favor of considering.
I mean, you could, yeah, you can separate them.
Yeah.
So would it have to be two resolutions or would we just say, approve this, this, but not this?
Let's see how we wrote this down here.
Play two resolution.
I mean, you, what do you think? You could do two separate resolutions and choose the elements that apply to each thing. That seems like a lot of work.
I guess it's up to whoever makes the motion.
Yeah, but there's, I guess I have another, I guess, clarifying question. If we don't approve the public parking, um, they can still use it for the customer parking because it's accessory use, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
And,
And paid customer parking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but then, but the air garage could theoretically still be there?
Uh-uh.
No?
No.
No?
Okay. Because that's public and not customer.
Okay.
And anyone can park in an air garage lot. Do.
What if, and I guess, you know, just to clarify that point that Rick makes, you know, if I didn't want to manage my parking lots parking, but it was going to be customer-paid parking, can I outsource the management of that to who I want to do it? So Air Garage could manage the parking for them as long as it's customer-only parking. Just want to clarify that that's.
Yeah, that's correct. Yep.
People do, I, I mean, Ellis is contracted by many people in this community to do their parking, to do, to serve as the parking manager of somebody's owned parking.
You can come up, sure.
So, um, I just want to reiterate that the, uh, part of the air garage, um, process that we're using now is because that the, frankly, the gate, the parking gates didn't work and we removed those. And it was, uh, as we intended, as we submitted for the LUDS permit, is to have access control gates that allow for transient parking. So similar to any parking garage that you go in, the ticketing issue goes away completely because you have to take a ticket and you need to pay to, to leave, um, just like any of the facilities that, that are around downtown. So that is the goal, that is the goal. Currently, I don't know how to manage if somebody would be a customer or not, if, if it, if it wasn't managed by, uh, a third party. Like I mentioned, all of our structured facilities are managed by Ellis, uh, of which they have twenty-four hour support as well. So in addition to manager support, they, they have call centers. We have it at the, uh, MSU GRIP. People do, uh, park there transiently as well. It's mostly for, for that, for that facility. I think because of the size of this, being less than twenty-five spaces, it is really shoehorned. I mean, this, long-term, I mean, we, we've always envisioned that this could be a redevelopment site. Next door, uh, at the lot that is adjacent is, is promoted as, as that as well in terms of, um, you know, available for transient parking, as well as the hotel parking. We have another lot as well that people call us, say, why, why don't you open this lot? It's right across from Studio Park, next to Dublin Hall, one hundred Ionia. And similar situation, it sits empty all weekend, um, because we don't have that availability to, to manage that. So people are calling us, asking, what's with your city? Kind of vacant lot right across the street from all this entertainment. So I think it's, it's really, I, from a perpetuity piece, I think, um, you know, what we have is an operating business that we want to be very successful long-term. Being in the center city with, with the opportunity, um, I think with any redevelopment, that would mostly likely go away, I would assume, in terms of, um, what the parking situation looks like in a redevelopment plan. And so I think, I think some of those issues could be, could be quelled with that. But, um, I think at this point, I don't, I'd, I'd hate to see the parking lot just sitting vacant because we don't know how to, how to manage it without the ability to have, you know, really have people park there, whether they're coming into our establishment or, or the surrounding community or the art museum or, or anything. So it's, I, I just don't, I, I guess, my, my question is, how do we, how do we manage that if we don't, if we can't have that approval?
If you're using Ellis right now for other parking ramps that you have, why could you not use Ellis for this?
I don't know if they're offering this type of service without gate, gate access, gate control. I could certainly check, uh, with them. At the time when we started the discussions, um, know the family for, for many, many years. And, um, currently, the way that the air garage and the other, other competing, uh, company uses, they have people that, I'm sure you've seen them walk around in the vest and they, they take you the license plates. All, by the way, and I'm sure you know this, but all of that revenue does not go to, to us as a, as a property owner. It goes to them, and we've had struggles with that, as Sam mentioned. You said, we, we want to get to the point that is an access control gate, solves a lot of those issues, solves a lot of those complaints. We just need to, we just need to get there. So that was part of the LUDS permit.
I don't think the access gate is an issue related. I don't think that, we're not making any decision specifically about that access gate. I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but I think that would still be moving forward. It's just a matter of whether it's, yeah, whether it's customer, however you want to define that or enforce that, or anyone from the public. And so it could still be access, it would still be access controlled, it would still be for a fee, but it just wouldn't be that establishment of a primary use, which I think is the sticking point here.
I, I like you, Mike, and I appreciate everything you've been doing downtown. I, I would be concerned about, like, who would get the property next, you know? And like, I, I trust you when you say, right, you know, what you're going to do is what you're going to do. It's just the, the historic, what, what's going to happen next? And, and a parking lot is like the lowest use.
Of course.
So.
I know, that's my concern, too, but I, I really do think that, you know, some things will happen. I mean, you look at every parking ramp in this town, whether it's Amways or some businesses, they're all open to the public. Not just city-owned. So, I mean, what I'm hoping to do is promote more, and, and you're right. If I drive by a parking lot that you can't use on the weekend, I think, what the heck's going on here? Why is it, why is it just sitting there when, of course, you know? And, and one of the problems is that surface parking is preferred by human beings over driving through a ramp. So, but for twenty-five parking spaces, the revenue that you're going to get off of that, one way or another, housing on that, over that building or another building with, you know, some kind of retail on the first floor, at some point, is going to be a lot more lucrative than getting revenue off of twenty-five parking spaces, in my opinion, and from what I've seen. So it doesn't bother me, um, that we have to be the ones that, that control that. Or that we allow the property owner to have that, but that at some point it will change. That's what I hope it does with almost every surface parking lot, except the one across from River House. That gives me great views, which I, I worry about.
So you're saying because of the small scale, you don't think this is making it a risk?
I don't think it's a deterrent to future more intensive use on that site. That's my opinion.
I'd have to agree with that, too.
And what I think I've seen.
Yeah, my only concern is this, like, I think this is the first time we're having this come to us, and there are more of these air garage lots all around the city. And does this open up a floodgate for that as well?
And quite frankly, on, on Bridge Street where I live, if you go down there, I like the fact that we have air garages instead of just a single-use parking lot next to Swift Planning or next to, and then at times, the parking lots are turned over for entertainment, just like this one is. So I don't know if that's, um, if, you know, I don't, I don't know that, you know, the ownership of all the parking lots that we still have in downtown and the extensions of downtown. I'm sure up on North Monroe, anything I see on the river that looks like a parking lot, yes, I hope that someday it will have a higher and best use. And I just think the demand at that site is going to, um, I'm optimistic about even more growth in downtown because economically, it doesn't make sense to get revenue from twenty-five parking places as it does from a hundred apartments that could go above that.
Yeah, but they can still get the revenue from this as a, as a customer-only parking lot, like, it's just not, it's not changing the official.
I don't know that we have, or is, so help me understand, staff, is the parking ramps that are attached to or, or built for our hotels, are those, are those, uh, forever and ever right? So the Marriott, the Grand Plaza, those are open for other users, correct? I can use those, I can go park at the Amway Grand and not use the Amway Grand, I mean, at their thing. I don't have to use their space. So is that also a piece of property where that parking ramp is that is a primary use?
The hotel would be the primary use. The parking deck would be accessory to that primary use.
And that can't be, and unless you change that, that can't be redeveloped in something else? Just like this, if you're doing.
The hotel could decide to take that ramp down and,
Right.
put something else.
Well, yeah, but.
They're not required to provide.
It's theirs.
But it's parking, but it's parking. So how is this, in my mind, I'm trying to see how this is different.
Because that parking ramp is an accessory use to the hotel.
And this parking lot is an accessory use?
This would be an additional use for the owner that's not accessory anymore, it's public.
It's establishing a primary use for the parking lot.
Then how can, how is that different than the Amway Grand Plaza where the public can park there and not use the hotel?
The primary use is the hotel.
Sure. I, I,
And that's what I'm saying, like,
But my,
the Amway is charging people who aren't using it as, I guess, customer parking. And he can do the same thing, but just not giving him a primary use of public parking.
Okay, how you, how do we monitor the, I mean, I don't.
It's not our job to monitor that.
No, I guess who does? Why would you, I mean, I don't know, I'm sorry.
No, I, it's good, these are great, these are great points, right? And so I think, uh, when, when we set up the, uh, the air garage account, again, as I prefaced before, we didn't know that there was special land use approval in order to do so. So that's why we're here today, asking for that. But also, don't want to limit our ability to, to utilize the spaces that have been there for many, many years. So it's, that's a, that's a precedent there, it's not new. A redevelopment, we would not, or anybody financially would not be able to redevelop a, a property of this size and keep that surface parking lot just by the geometry of the, of the facility with two elevators, two stair towers, things of that nature. And, and so I don't know if it is just a matter of signage, that instead of public, it says customer. People don't listen to that anyway, to be honest. And, and there's no, really, there's no way to monitor that, especially in a gate situation because people take a ticket, they park, they can go wherever they want, just like your, your reference to Amway Grand Plaza Hotel or any, any others. And then they pay on, on the way out. I think the similar, again, is, is our, what our, our take on it is now is to, to gain revenue, to, to support a startup business, is that Air Garage, or I forget the other, the other company, offers that service. It's very expensive as a business owner. And we like to change it. So that's, but in the, in the interim, when we were notified by staff that we're actually doing it not in compliance, of course, we want to be in compliance. So that's, that's why we're here. And, and so, so, yeah, I think there could be some other precedent, you know, lots around. I, I understand the, the concern there. But, um, I think the highest, I mean, in the long-term, this is, is most likely a redevelopment site. But with the amount of money that we have invested in this business and operation, we'd like to keep this here for quite a long time because we've got air bills.
So as a business owner, I can absolutely see wanting to monetize every square inch of any opportunity that I have, right? And is this a, you know, is, is it semantics or am I required to police my lot? If I put a sign up that says customer parking and it's an automated system that has a backup, whether it's managed by his manager, Air Garage, or Ellis, somebody I can call if I can't get my ticket to slide in and out of the slot? If there's a gate and a sign that says, you know, customer parking, but I'm not open and somebody goes in there and parks and uses it, am I in violation or is it, you know?
Yeah, in that situation, the property owner would be responsible if there's non-compliance with the zoning code.
And,
The property owner would be responsible.
So with a gate and customer parking, it can only be utilized when the business is open?
If there is not land use approval for parking as a principal use, um, and there is a violation there, the property owner could be cited by the city for that violation.
Thank you.
Seems to me it comes down to, uh, long-term, short-term. And, um, two things, that one. And as I, my, my opinion is, I don't need to worry about the long-term because I see how surface parking lots have been redeveloped all over this city because of the economics. I think the short-term is, I don't want us to encourage one-use parking lots. I think we've talked about that before. If you go up and down Leonard, you got a McDonald's with thousands of, not thousands, I exaggerate, but empty parking places and no place for people to park when they're going to different bars. And you want, you know, the beauty of being downtown is, and the walkability is, I'm not going to go to just one place. So anyways, I advocate, I see, um, the short-term, I see the long-term, um, development of it minimized because of its location, because of the other growth, because of amphitheaters and stadiums and stuff like that, over the short-term opportunity to have a parking lot used by more than just one entity of hundreds downtown. So that's where, that's how I'm processing this for my decision.
It sounds like you're ready to make a motion.
I would be, but I, I want to.
I mean, it's, you can make a motion and see what happens. I mean, I think we're all in agreement about certain, about most of it, so. I mean, I think we're all in agreement about certain, about most of it, so everyone just.
And I don't mind separating the motion if we feel that's necessary.
I think you should just make your motion. I'm sorry, maybe I'm not supposed to.
I don't want to be in the elevator with anybody afterwards, so I'll just say that. Okay. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning commission approves the special land use and site plan review, approval request of 19th Holdings LLC to use the accessory parking lot associated with Gimme's Par and Grill as paid par, public parking to establish an outdoor alcohol service area and to hold up to 10 outdoor events with live entertainment per year at 45 Ottawa Northwest for the following reasons. The proposed use will be consistent with the purpose and intent of the master plan and zoning ordinance, including the zone district, because the proposed use supports placemaking elements of the TNCC Zone District to create healthy, attractive, safe, and fun areas that will attract new visitors, residents, and shoppers to the downtown area. The use of an existing surface parking lot supports the 2024 Community Master Plan Balanced Mobility Recommendation 4.0C.2 by prioritizing space for people by not increasing the square footage of impervious area or adding a new surface parking lot. Conveniently located public parking will contribute to a level of activity necessary to support the retail, restaurant, and entertainment uses desired by the Grand Rapids Forward Plan. The proposed use, number two, the proposed use will meet the site plan standards of Section 5.12.08.E because the site is designed to comply with all provisions of the zoning ordinance. Outdoor events taking place on-site will be developed so as not to impede the normal and orderly development or improvement of surrounding property. 3A, the proposed use will be compatible, harmonious, and appropriate with the character and uses of the neighborhood and adjacent properties because the proposed outdoor hours of the operation are similar to other establishments in the area. The bar cart is similar to those used by other businesses participating in the central downtown refreshment area activities. The parking lot already exists and its use will not increase the amount of surface parking in the area. Public parking at this location will provide an opportunity for visitors of downtown to park once and walk to a variety of destinations. Potentially adverse, 3B, potentially adverse effects arising from the proposed uses will be minimized because the site is located in the vicinity of other businesses that have alcohol sales and have similar hours of operation. The provision of adequate public parking will help support businesses in a vibrant and growing downtown. 3C, the proposed use will not be detrimental, hazardous, or distributing to existing or future uses or to the public welfare by reason of excessive traffic, noise, smoke, or odor, or, or odors, excuse me there, because no public testimony and opposition has been, scratch that, thank you. We'll drop that first bullet. The proposed use is not anticipated to result in excessive noise, glare, or visual clutter. 3D, the proposed use will not adversely affect the walkability of the neighborhood, impair pedestrian circulation patterns, disrupt the continuity of the urban street wall, or otherwise hinder the creation of a pedestrian-oriented environment because amplified music and live entertainment in the outdoor area alcohol service area will cease by 11:00 PM. The site is located in the central downtown refreshment area with nearby public transit and public parking places, facilities nearby. Daily activity consists of the public parking and the onsite parking lot in order to walk to events off-site. 5B, the proposed use will not be detrimental to the financial stability or economic welfare of the city because the use is not anticipated to result in nuisances that require police or code enforcement actions. The use will encourage other investment in the area. The use will ensure the viability of the surrounding uses by creating additional public parking. 5C, the use will comply with all other applicable city ordinances and policies and applicable state laws through maintenance of a City of Grand Rapids parking facility license. E1, given the character, location, development trends, and other aspects of the neighborhood, it is demonstrated that the area is underserved by the proposed use and that the proposed location for alcohol sales will demonstrably be an asset to the neighborhood because the proposed activities will be unique to the neighborhood, and approval of this request will not result in a concentration of such uses. The use will contribute to an already vibrant commercial district. E3, the use or change in use as constructed and operated by the applicant is compatible with the neighborhood because the scale of the operation is compatible with other uses in the area. The proposed outdoor hours of operation are consistent with other establishments in the vicinity. E5, the use as proposed to be operated by the applicant will not have any or minimal negative secondary, excuse me for a minute, I think I have to go to the other page, effects on the neighborhood because the use is not anticipated to result in nuisances, or wait, the use is not anticipated to result in nuisances that require code enforcement actions. Be it further resolved that the following conditions of approval shall apply to the project as posted or shown on the screen. Number two, that indoor hours of operation shall cease by midnight. Number three, that outdoor alcohol service live entertainment shall cease by 11:00 PM Fridays and Saturdays, and by 10:00 PM Sundays through Thursday. Four, that outdoor events shall not exceed 10 events per year. That the outdoor events are subject to the Noise Control Ordinance. Six, that the applicant shall apply for a temporary use permit for each event. And seven, that a City of Grand Rapids parking facility business license shall be maintained.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any discussion? So one, one question I had that I posed is whether, if establishing this as a primary use, this parking lot could be parsed off as its own separate lot and maintained as a parking lot, under a different control? Okay, and maybe that doesn't impact other people's decisions, but that.
I think it is relevant. I think what we were talking about is, I, I think the short answer is yes, it could be, but then we were thinking about the subdivision regulations, and it would be a true lot, it would be like a L, but if the parking lot.
Squared off.
If it were just a rectangle, then the short answer would be yes. I don't think, there's no lot width requirement downtown either, is there?
No.
25 feet.
But the, the lot area, there's no lot area requirement.
There's no lot area, you would meet the lot width, so the answer is yes, it could be divided off.
Just a point of clarification, is the request that's teed up only to use the existing parking area as a principal use, or the entire lot? I believe it's the former, not the latter.
It's yes, just the existing parking.
Correct, okay.
But the parking could be separated from the remainder of the building.
Right.
Okay. All right, here we go, folks. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, all right, thanks, y'all.
Can I read, can I read it again?
Yep. All right, thank you. All right, it's 3:15, let's take a five-minute break. Well, it's been more than five minutes, so let's get started, and I'm sure Commissioner Truer will trickle in here soon. I said five.
I thought you said 10.
Absolutely. I said five, absolutely.
8.
Yeah. All right, let's go ahead.
She said 10.
Absolutely not, never.
So our, our next case is for 220 Wealthy Street Southeast. This is a request to waive the ground floor active use requirement for a parking structure. The subject property is located on the south side of Wealthy Street, bounded by Jefferson Avenue, Logan Street, and vacated Cass Avenue. It is in the TNTCC or Transitional City Center Zone District, and it may look familiar to you as this, this property came to the planning commission, and the planning commission granted approval for a pedestrian bridge to cross Wealthy Street from a, a new children's hospital that is currently under construction to connect to the Mary Freebed Building just north of Wealthy Street on Jefferson. The property is approximately three acres and has been surface parking for many years, as you can see in this image here. Here's the site plan or the existing conditions before the construction of the children's And this is the approved Land Use Development Services, or LUDS, permit for the children's hospital development. And you can see the pedestrian bridge on the, on the north side of the property here. As you can see in this image, what was proposed and approved included surface parking for the children's hospital. In, so this was approved in November of 2024. In July of this year, the applicant had a parking demand study completed. And based on the conclusions of the study and the anticipated growth over the next five years, it was determined that additional parking is needed for the campus. The surface parking lot, this lovely lot, was, it provided parking for the entire Mary Freebed campus, for visitors, guests, patients, and staff. So now I'm going to hit you with a bunch of math and numbers, stay with me. The, this surface parking lot had 294 parking spaces. The approved site plan includes 121 parking spaces. This is a loss of 173 parking spaces that had been available for the entire campus. As a result of the parking demand study, Mary Freebed is now building a parking structure that will have 400, so now the site with this parking structure will have 402 parking spaces. Not only was there a loss of parking, but this new children's hospital needs more parking. So with the new children's hospital, the parking requirement of the zoning ordinance is a minimum of 75 spaces and a maximum of 90. So, the difference between the number of campus-wide parking spaces that were available before construction of the children's hospital, and what is proposed with the parking structure today, is an increase of 18 parking spaces. Does anybody have questions about all of that math?
I just, I agree with your math, or the one I could do, and I had real quick, but, and when I read it, is that, was this, this space all used for parking recently, too?
It was, yes. It was used for Mary Freebed parking, for the patients, visitors, and staff.
Because they do have parking ramps on the other side now, I didn't know.
The parking demand study that was conducted was for the entire campus, and it included all of their building, all of their staff and patients, visitors, and all of the parking, and there are some, there's some parking available and ramps elsewhere on the campus.
I didn't know if this was still in use, that's all. Okay, thank you.
So, you're welcome. So a parking deck, or a parking ramp in the TNTCC Zone District is permitted by right. It is not a special land use. Because the Transitional City Center Zone District requires, it, the intent of the Zone District is to include a pedestrian-friendly, walkable, compact neighborhood. Ground floor active uses are a requirement to be included with a parking structure. The zoning ordinance allows the Planning Commission to waive that requirement, and that is why this request is before you today. The parking structure will be five levels, with main access on the north side of the parking structure, off of the drive, the private drive from Jefferson Avenue. And there will be two stair towers, one on the southwest side and one on the northeast side, as pictured in this rendering. The property as a whole, so the entire property, has frontage on three streets, Wealthy Street, Jefferson Avenue, and Logan Street. The front setback is determined by the required building line, or RBL. And that's, you know, it needs to be consistent with the built environment. The proposed front setback on Jefferson Street is approximately 16 feet, which is consistent with the children's hospital building currently under construction. Where a property has frontage on two or more streets, an RBL only applies on two of the streets, in this case Jefferson and Wealthy. So the frontage at the south of this parking structure, at the south of the property, minimum setback applies. And in this Zone District, it's a minimum of zero or five feet. So from the south property line, the structure is proposed to be set back ranging from 13 to 22 feet. The streets aren't exactly, you know, parallel or perpendicular, so the building is set to be parallel to Jefferson and Cass, and that accounts for the range of that setback. The building is set back 40 feet, approximately, from the property line, which runs through the middle of Vacated Cass Avenue. In this Zone District, where a building or structure in a mixed-use Zone District is two or more stories higher than the buildings in adjacent residential Zone Districts, a landscape buffer with a minimum of 10 feet is required. And so the setbacks proposed on the south and east sides allows for that minimum 10-foot landscape buffer. This is a conceptual landscape plan, it does show that landscaping is proposed around the parking structure. The details of the landscaping can be finalized at permitting. So with the consideration of waiving an active use, the Planning Commission, the request must meet the special land use standards. In addition, some additional considerations are the ground-level active use of the children's hospital on the same property, although it is in a separate building. As I mentioned, the purpose and intent of the TNTCC Zone District. In that district, it's intended to provide a transition from the higher-intensity commercial, city-center uses to the residential uses. If we go back to the zoning map, this Zone District is specifically the area of construction where the parking structure will go, is at the south side of the property, which is at the edge of the TCC Zone District. And also, it's important to consider, you know, maintaining a compact, pedestrian-friendly, transit-friendly, mixed-use environment. And in some of that, the continuity of the urban street wall without an active use, particularly considering building design elements and street scape design, can have an impact as well, without an active use. Talking about the building element requirements, the building materials, transparency, entrance orientation, facade variation, and expression line can all be incorporated into an overall design to mitigate or offset the loss of, or the lack of, a ground floor active use. The proposed materials are precast concrete. The concrete will have reveals, you can see in this image on the slide here. The reveals cut into the concrete to provide some, to break up the structure and to provide some design elements. The main entrance will be interior to the site, consistent with that main drive off Jefferson. And you can see on the north elevation, and on the west elevation, the west elevation faces Jefferson, there are proposing screens to go atop the concrete structure, to help break up the massing. Then on the north and the south elevations, you can see here on this south elevation facing Logan, the supporting columns will be projected out of the structure. An example of that is in the image set, in this photo on this page. And so that is also intended to break up the massing of the structure. And I'll let the applicant provide more details about the design and the choices behind the design as well. There were two letters received from people who work in the area, and both happened to bike to work, and they both had concerns about the lack of active use and the long corridor, the building of this size would create relative to a bike or a pedestrian environment. And those letters have been provided in your packets. So in sum, we are asking the Planning Commission to consider the waiver of the ground floor active use for this new parking structure, provided the special land use standards are met, and considering the impact of the structure on the pedestrian experience and the purpose and intent of the TCC Zone District, the overall site design with the children's hospital on the same property, and whether additional information is needed, or otherwise, if other elements are required to meet the standards, perhaps the Planning Commission would be amenable to deferring to staff to work with the applicant to finalize the plans, to ensure that they meet the facade variation and the materials and the expression line standards. Are there any questions?
I had a question relative to the discussion we had a couple of weeks ago, about the parking structure on the river. And I wondered, and how we require special treatment, or some kind of, in lieu of any first-floor retail, some kinds of treatment. Is that just for our riverfront property, or would that, that doesn't translate to other properties in downtown?
That was a requirement specifically to the Grand River overlay.
Okay, thank you.
How many spaces would be lost if there was active use on the ground floor?
I know that the applicant provided that information, I don't recall, so I will let them answer that.
Okay, great. Anything else for Laura? Okay, thanks, Laura, and we'll have the applicant come up.
Thank you, good afternoon. Josh Roseboom, project manager for the design team with Fishbeck, and I'm joined by representatives from Mary Freebed and Pure Architects. Just to directly address your question, so the parking structure, to start with, has a net gain of 280 parking spaces over the current site plan that you've approved already with the parking lot. So, and then we'd lose 32 parking spaces with the addition of the active use, so that's more than a 10% reduction in our parking. Okay. And I don't have too many details to add beyond what Laura shared, so if you have any questions.
Go ahead.
In requesting the waiver of active ground floor, I think we're required to look at the design and determine if the design elements of the structure mitigate the lack of ground floor use through the use of different materials, colors, et cetera. I wonder if you could, I mean candidly, this feels like precast right down to the ground. So could you elaborate on how the design has been adjusted to try to mitigate that?
Sure. So the panels you see, I have the mouse on here.
Yep.
The color is to be determined, those are the fabric facade panels. You're correct, you have the gray concrete everywhere else, and this is all open between the precast, and then there's the storefront glazing at the stairs. But there's intended to be some level of color, but that's yet to be determined. And then we're showing, as Laura pointed out, some conceptual landscaping at grade between the parking structure and the right-of-way. That's just intended to show that we'll have landscaping, that's to be developed at this point.
Is there bike parking as part of this development?
Bike parking on the site, but not specifically in the parking structure.
Okay. And then, does Mary Freebed have, like, alternative transportation programs for their employees? Do they pay for bus passes, et cetera?
Yes, we do. We actually have a Wheels to Work program.
Yeah.
We have a Wheels to Work program that we implemented the last three months, and is used very, very much with our employees. And that's pretty much what we have done so far.
Okay. Yeah, about how many, do you have an approximate number for the amount of participants?
No, but I, it's, I know it's very well-used, so.
And could you give us your name for the record?
Okay, I'm Robert Van Rees, and I'm the facilities director at Mary Freebed.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Can you talk about engagement with the neighborhood on this design?
We haven't had a neighborhood meeting as of yet, but we planned on meeting with them. We haven't made a, with the Heritage Hill District, we haven't had a meeting with them yet.
But they are aware of the project.
Yeah, they are aware of the project.
Have you found that the Wheels to Work program has lessened the demand on your parking facilities?
Not as much as we would like. You know, the Wheels to Work program is really used for people that do not have automobiles, or, you know, just need a ride. The hospital does subsidize that, so they, the employees don't really have to pay a whole lot.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I think it's a great program.
I have engaged with some others with Grand Rapids about the use of counting our parking spots as possible, using that parking garage for different events for Grand Rapids, being at the amphitheater, and you got the soccer stadium going up and things like that. Grand Rapids is actively looking for additional parking for those types of events, so we have been engaged in conversations with them for that.
Okay. In addition to Wheels to Work, do you do any partnership with the Rapid, or like the e-scooters or car share or anything like that?
We've had conversations with the Rapid, forgot her name offhand, and we've had conversations, and that's about all we've had so far.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Whoops. Robert, Josh, as part of your demand study was done for parking, there's a note in here that roughly 50 people park within the neighborhood. Can you explain how you manage both the parking within the facility on your guys' property, as well as the, you know, the employees or staff that are parking within the neighborhood? And is there a way, as part of this parking garage, will they be able to park?
Well, because we're 90 to 98% to capacity, there's no parking. So when employees come and work from like nine to, start at nine, the current parking structure that we have is full, so they're wandering around, trying to find whatever parking they have. With this additional parking structure, they won't have to, they'll have the parking we need to, so we won't, I mean, the whole idea is to get that parking off the neighborhood streets. But, you know, it's busy around there right now, so.
Can you talk a little bit about growth of the hospital, as well as demand for parking? Will this garage solve your parking demands?
We took some of our growth in effect.
Yeah, I think it was, well, with the new hospital building, we applied a 10% in '27, plus 5% annual, and projected to 2030, and I think it was over 332 space deficit by 2030. So that's where the parking structure is intended to address current deficit, some growth, and trying to limit the potential to have to add surface parking elsewhere.
And can you give us a little bit of, or an explanation on that active ground floor space that's typically required? Why is it not, why can you not integrate it into this building? Is there not demand for commercial retail, or could you not use that space?
I don't think there's a real demand. If you look on Division and Wealthy, there's two, there's business occupancies that are for lease right now. One of the intent was to create as much first-floor parking for our patients, as much as possible. When we have the active use, that's going to push into that building, forcing people to go up to the next floor, and with our wheelchair-accessible patients, and that we felt that if we get rid of that, that we can provide them more of a first-floor experience to the hospital, without having to go to the second floor. And also, you know, with the active space, there's really not a lot of use for healthcare to use that, because it's only 30-foot deep. And there's enough coffee shops and Big B's around there that probably wouldn't have a good place to put any businesses in there, so. a good, good place to put any businesses in there, so.
And the access drive, our ingress and egress, off from Logan, is that going to be gated? Is that open year-round?
It will be gated.
Okay.
It's an auxiliary entry-exit.
Okay. So will that just be open during, like during peak hours, or, or just not at all? It's just for emergency access?
Emergencies, and then it was also intended for an area to dump snow, so we could read, unload our snow off the, off the deck and use that as a park, as a driveway. So we're just trying to use the space efficiently.
Thank you.
I can't recall from the application, but is this parking ramp going to be 24/7 operated? Or does it close at any time?
It won't close.
It won't close.
I mean, we're 24/7 operation.
That's what I thought, yeah.
And parents will be going back and forth, but for the most part, at night, it will be, it's not going to be to capacity after 6 o'clock.
Do you have security? Because I imagine it's a ticket-operated.
We have armed officers in our, in our hospital, and we run 24/7. And we'll have surveillance cameras in there and things of that nature.
Thank you.
Just to answer your question, it's not ticketed, it's not paid parking, there's no public, it is, it is just visitors, patients and staff.
Yeah. Oh, I misunderstood you.
No, I didn't answer that. Okay. But you might allow it for use for other entertainment venues?
If the city is interested in working with us, we would entertain that conversation.
Okay. So there's no payment transaction?
No, it's not paid parking.
I think I remember having come to the other facility that that was the case.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, we'll let you have a seat. I'll open up the public hearing. If you're here on this case, feel free to approach the mic and tell us your thoughts. Nope. Okay, I'll close the public hearing then. All right, commissioners. Thoughts on this?
Well, you know, we approved the pedestrian walkway readily, I think, knowing the importance and of these, of this institution and what it does, not just for the people of Grand Rapids, but all over the country. I guess I'm just a little surprised, though, that there wasn't any neighborhood engagement, particularly Heritage Hill, which is a pretty active, active neighborhood. And, you know, this is a huge development, and I'm not saying anything against it, but I was surprised by that.
Yeah, I was also, and I guess I would ask staff, is, I assume that this building would fall in the purview of the Heritage Hill, in that would they get?
I think it's in seats of promise. Let me confirm that.
It's not Heritage Hill, Laura's saying.
Okay.
Is that, is that a fair statement, staff?
Um, yes, yes.
Which neighborhood is it?
Seats of promise.
So, yeah, my, my concern echoes that of my fellow commissioners that have spoken already. You know, with, with the hospital growing, there's clearly a need for, there's going to be a need for additional parking, so that's not, that's not the question. But I think it would have been fruitful for you to get neighborhood buy-in, or at least have the neighborhood have a voice prior to coming to Planning Commission, so that you could have received word directly from them. But other than that, no, I'm, I'm in favor of, of the application.
I'm in favor as well. It makes logical sense to me why Mary Freebed would need this, and I'm grateful for this new asset in our community. I'm going to repeat what everybody else said, just because I think it's worth it. We always love to see community engagement. You may learn something easy to do that you wouldn't have otherwise, knowing that we're not able to do everything that everyone wants us to do. And the design element, I don't know how to say this in design terms, but I just wish as a children's hospital, it was more, I don't know, bright or inviting or something. I'm surprised that it just feels like a precast concrete structure. So waiving that first floor requirement, I would love to see something added to the design. And again, I'm sorry, I'm not eloquent in exactly how to say that.
Yeah, I would agree. But I, as Laura said, I think I'm happy to defer the, the decision to make it pretty to staff to work out with the applicant.
Yeah, I would echo those comments. I think my concern around deferring to staff is that I feel like we're a little bit far off, and I'm not sure how to direct staff at this point. I would prefer to see a different ground floor material for the first level to give it more of a podium effect, not that dissimilar from, you know, perhaps what has been suggested with the Studio Park in the, in the photograph on the screen, which I think gives a much different feel. But the, there leaves a lot of, a lot of the design is yet to be determined, is what I heard, and we've, we're lacking neighborhood engagement. So I, I think I would probably, unless we can, as a group, come up with something fairly prescriptive that we'd like to see, I, I think it would make more sense to me to have it come back here, actually, after those steps are taken.
I agree.
Yeah, I think so too. I am encouraged that, that the applicant is working with Wheels to Work and working on kind of diversifying the, the types of modes that employees are taking to work. So I commend y'all for that, and I hope your conversations with the Rapid continue, and hopefully there's an additional partnership that, that y'all can forge there. Yeah, I, I think as it sits before us now, I would not say that it meets the material requirements and the, especially if we're waiving that ground floor active use. And, yeah, I think I would like to see some, some changes made to this. I don't know, again, like, I'm not going to design from up here, I'm not an architect or a designer, but seems like an opportunity for murals or something like that, I don't know. But yeah, and to have some engagement with the neighborhood. I mean, maybe they would get insight as to whether there is a need for some active use on the ground floor if engagement with the neighborhood was done. Maybe not the full wraparound like we would require, but maybe there is something that the community would like to see there if additional engagement was done. And yeah, to firm up the landscape plans and stuff, too. That would be nice to have a little, something, a little bit more concrete than what we have before us today.
Or a little less concrete.
Oh, thank you very much. Yes, not materials, not the concrete material. Thank you. All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll do it if, if it works.
Already done one. What I'm hearing, well, I'll get through it and then we'll. This, this, I lost my place. Which, which Wealthy Street one do we have here? This is it, the parking?
Yep.
Yep. Now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Commission postpones, am I hearing?
Open? Postpones open?
Yeah. Postpones?
Postponing would be to a date certain, and tabling is just.
Tabling opens, okay.
Table would be better?
Yep.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Commission tables the special land use and site plan review request of Mary Freebed Rehabilitation Hospital to waive the ground floor active use requirement for a new parking structure at 220 Wealthy Street Southeast for the following reasons. The proposed use will not.
I don't think you need to, no, I think.
Or you don't have to?
No, we're just, we just have to tell them what we expect them to do, which, as far as I heard.
I think.
Related to neighborhood engagement and materials.
Related to engagement of the neighborhoods and reassessment of the materials that are being proposed.
And landscaping.
And landscaping. Thank you.
Support.
All right, I have a motion, support. Any additional discussion?
Do we want, do we want to direct any, or suggest that they have any discussion with the neighborhood regarding the active use? Like, do we need to specify that at all, or?
I could amend it to say the, until they meet with, engage with, I think might be a better word, the neighborhood about the plans, the active use.
Materials.
And development and materials of the parking ramp. Does that sound okay?
Just support?
I hesitate on the neighbors with active use. Because I, I mean, I think the neighbors would say, yeah, I would love to see a playground in there or a donut shop, but that doesn't mean it's a feasible option, right?
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
Maybe just plans in general?
Yeah.
Sure. Okay.
So, community, just tabled? I, I understand and agree. I think that, you know, what we want and the feasibility studies and things that need to go into that could be different. But to engage the neighborhood, to review the plans, the materials, landscaping for the parking ramp, design and implementation.
Let me see materials, are we really talking about the architectural treatment or mitigation for lack, architectural treatment to mitigate for lack of a, or activation?
Yes, yes. Is there, yeah, if you want to provide us some language, it feels like we're struggling here a little bit.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I suppose. Go ahead.
I mean, the importance here is the active use. The elements of the design, I think we can come back and, and show you what we can do with the, with the design of the, with the structure. I know some of those vertical sections don't depict what we're really planning on doing, but they're what, there are plans to make it very beautiful and colorful. The intent of this meeting is really to waive the active use, which we don't have a use for, and it's going to add extra time and cost to the, to the project. So we really would like to at least get the active use waived, and then.
The only way we can waive that is if we're comfortable with the design being presented. And I, what I'm hearing is we're not, so we'd like to see the design come back.
Can we refer the, the design to the staff?
No, I don't think we have, yeah, we have a motion on the table, so we, we have to do that, too.
In terms of the wording, in lieu of, I think what I'm hearing from folks is that we would like for the applicant to, we are tabling this, so the applicant can meet with the neighbors and look to design both the construction materials, the landscaping, to incorporate some more neighborhood-friendly aspect. I'm going too far, I'm not an architect.
Commissioner, I think I can help here.
Okay, good.
How about this, to allow time for the applicant to engage with the neighborhood and revise plans to provide additional mitigation in lieu of the active ground floor, floor area, including enhancing materials, landscaping and architectural treatments.
I think that's why you're paid and I'm not. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, good. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Thank you very much. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. One more case, same, same building here. And I think Elizabeth will walk us through this.
I think it's a different building, isn't it? Isn't it the main building?
Same property.
Same property. Yes.
So, since you are familiar with the property, I will not go over all the details. But the Mary Freebed is asking for an amendment to their plan sign program for the new children's hospital. There are no, there's no signage proposed on the proposed parking structure, so we don't need to worry about that element. But they are asking for several signs to identify the, the, the main office building, or rather, hospital and the, the parking lot entrance. This is a planned sign program. A planned sign program is, allows for signage that deviates from the limits of a particular zone district. In this case, transitional city center, where, as Laura went, explained, we're just south of the city center, but also, but also adjacent to residential. So that's something to keep in mind here. But relative to considering the signage, please keep in mind the four requirements for a planned sign program, and those are in the staff report. It has to do with whether a deviation is necessary, whether the property is unique, whether the plan is consistent with the purposes and intent of the zoning, the zone district, and whether the plan sign program would have an adverse impact on property in the vicinity. So there are two signs under consideration in the packet. It does say three. The applicant has revised the plan to, to reduce it to two. I believe they were not aware of the change to the site to incorporate the, the parking deck, and so only one ground sign is proposed. So an upper-level sign on the new hospital is proposed. It's here at the corner, and a ground sign is proposed at the entrance off of Jefferson. There are two interior signs that are not part of the plan sign program. They're considered incidental signs and are not generally visible from the street. The upper-level sign is proposed to be 317 square feet with 41-inch-high letters on that north elevation. The area of a sign is dependent on the linear footage, the length of that building wall. And in this case, a sign of 275 square feet would be allowed. They're asking for 317 square feet, an additional 42 square feet in area. For a three-story building, the letter height would be limited to 30 inches, and they're proposing 41 inches. So we're, we're asking the Planning Commission whether there's a demonstrated need for this larger sign and letter height relative to traffic flow and the surrounding buildings and zone districts. The second sign is the ground sign on Jefferson. Now, this sign meets the height and area limits. It'll be a 32-square-foot sign, it'll be five feet in height. The reason that it's, well, in this case, it actually, they're asking for a reduction in the minimum setback. So a minimum setback of 15 feet is required, they're asking for a five-foot setback. Unfortunately, there is a problem with that. We actually can't allow that. We, there's the clear vision area that you can see here, and. and nothing higher than five, I'm sorry, five feet. Nothing higher than 30 inches can be allowed in this clear vision area to ensure that site distances are clear. And our traffic engineer has said that a 10-foot setback, they'd like a minimum of a 10-foot setback here. Something that could be considered, and I'd love the applicant to perhaps talk about this, is perhaps moving the sign north a bit into this, what's shown as a parking space. And the sign could be pushed out of that clear vision area and possibly moved back a bit. But at any rate, it would be out of the clear vision area. Additionally, a 200-square-foot landscape area could be created. We do require a 200-square-foot landscape bed around a sign, and at this particular sign doesn't meet that. So making that area larger or moving the sign slightly north could accomplish that. So for this second sign, we're really only talking about the setback and whether you find a five-foot setback to be appropriate. That is what is being requested, although we really need something further back if it's going to be in this location because of the clear vision area. I hope that, I hope that's clear. And so, yeah, so that, and then we have some interior signs. So that's really it. We're looking at two signs, an upper-level sign and a ground sign. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Elizabeth?
I guess, has the applicant given any reason why the sign has to be bigger? Or should I just defer that to them?
I'll let the applicant talk about that.
Figured you would, so.
All right, well, we'll have the applicant come up then.
And feel, feel free to go back and forth, and I can also advance the slides if you like.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Carrie Wessiner, Inc., representing the company on this. I do want to say for the ground sign, I think there was a little bit of confusion. We actually wanted to deviate five feet from the 15 required foot setback, so 10 feet is perfectly fine. That was our plan in the beginning, so we do not have a problem with that. For, and you wanted about the wall sign, is what you were interested in. So with the square footage allowances and with the length of the name, oh, sorry, and with the length of the name, it's the visibility at 30 inches at that height is very minimal. So that is why we are requesting the taller side, or taller letters, which then increases the square footage, so that is the reason for that.
Do you happen to know how large the sign, the upper signs are on like the Mary Freebed rehabilitation?
On the actual hospital?
Yeah.
I...
There's green lettering there, and I just wonder if it's, this is comparable to that, or?
I could definitely get that information. I do not have that with me today.
We have that.
Okay, thank you.
So, let's see if we can figure that out. I'm sorry, I don't know this, like, the back of my hand, this information. Which particular sign?
I was thinking about sign one.
Sign one.
That's right along Jefferson.
Okay.
So, let's see, what number, sign one. Sign one, that was allowed, of course, this is in the CC Zone District. The maximum area was 412 square feet. It was approved at 525, okay? So it was approved, you know, over 100 square feet larger. And it was approved with a 60-inch letter height with a maximum of 48 inches. So that was also exceeded. Sign one, sign, yeah, even that sign two, wait, sign four. Yeah, sign four also is significantly larger. 188 square feet was the maximum. 335 was approved. It met the letter height, however.
Thank you, it's helpful.
48 inches.
Great, all right, thank you. Any additional questions? All right, great, thank you. All right, we'll open up the public hearing. If you're here on this case, make way to the mic. Tell us your thoughts. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn to my fellow commissioners here. Pretty straightforward.
Well, I certainly want to see Joan Sekia's name on that for all she's done for this. It seems like it's consistent with across the street. That makes me feel better. But, it's my thoughts. Yeah.
Maybe I do have one other question. Can, you, yes, the app, yes, as the applicant. You clarified something around the distance, and I'm not sure I understood that was, what that was.
Sorry, we were just discussing that. So for sign, for the freestanding sign with the clear vision, so what is shown on this has a five-foot setback, if you're looking at, sorry, I don't see where the key is on that. So we would, right now, we would move it back, what our original plan was, was to move it back east an additional five feet. So what I would need to do at this point is see where that put it in the clear vision, and then at that point, if we would need to move it north, we could do that as well to get it out of the clear vision triangle.
Okay.
I would just have to see that, like, on the actual plan to see how far.
As well, see additional landscaping?
So the additional landscaping, we can go on whatever is needed, where that's going to be, it was 200 square feet, I believe. So that we'll have to look at, that may go into the parking spots that are there right now, but we would just have to adjust that island that goes on, but we could meet that requirement, working with Mary Freebed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, I would want to see the landscape requirement be met. And then, yeah, obviously, it needs to be out of that clear vision area, but I'm comfortable with staff working with the applicant to figure that out. And as far as the wall sign goes, yeah, with the height and the scale of the building, and I'm comfortable with the deviation there, too. Great. Wouldn't anyone like to make a motion?
Well, I'll try to make a motion. Another verbiage resolved that the Planning Commission approves the request of Mary Freebed Rehab Hospital for an amendment to the planned sign program for the Joan Sekia Children's Hospital at 220 Wealthy Street Southeast for the following reasons. The applicant has, number one, the applicant has demonstrated that the proposed planned sign program amendment would result in a more attractive aesthetic setting, improve safety, provide more convenient identification for planned users, or similar purposes because the proposed signs allow for adequate and effective identification and appropriate commercial speech. Two, that the location and/or physical characteristics of the applicant's property or the needs for identification are unique when compared to other similarly situated parcels in the same zone district and in the same vicinity because the overall development consists of approximately 12 acres and is comprised of multiple buildings and is visible from US 131, Wealthy Street exit. And rehabilitation and medical services require an elevated level of attention and wayfinding in order to best serve patients traveling to the site. Three, the applicant has demonstrated that proposed plan substantially furthers the purposes and intent of Section 51501 because the proposed amendment would protect the need to provide directional awareness for users of the development. Four, the applicant has demonstrated that approval of the planned sign program amendment would not create any adverse impacts on one or more of the properties in the vicinity because the proposed amendment reinforces and supports the character of the surrounding development by considering building scale and massing and nearby travel speeds, balances the needs and rights to communicate with needs to promote orderly communication, promote community aesthetics, and prevent a proliferation of signs and sign structures that can be confusing and distracting, and will ensure that signs are located, designed, constructed, installed, and maintained in a way that protects life, health, property, and the public welfare. Be it further resolved that the following conditions approval shall apply to this project, standard conditions set A approvals on the screen, striking. Three, five, and seven. Two, that the west ground sign be installed outside of the clear vision area. Three, that the west ground sign be 10 feet from the lot line. Four, that landscaping requirements are met and shall be installed at the base of each, of the ground sign to the furthest extent possible. And five, that the approval shall have immediate effect.
Support.
All right, we have a motion support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks very much. Okay. We are now on what? Any discussion here? Oh, public comment. I'll open it up for public comment. If anyone would like to approach the mic and tell us your thoughts, feel free to come up. Nah, seeing none, I'll close public comment. We adjourned. Thanks, y'all.